Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Yeah, there we go. And it will be. Close session reports.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to report out that on items B2 and B3, the City Council voted in closed session by a tally of four to one, Councilmember Louvenos voting no, to place the matter of the city manager's employment contract on the next open session agenda. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Mr. Jorge Garcia, would you lead us in the pledge, sir?
Much allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Litzter, here. Councilmember Louvenos, here. Councilmember Kavanagh, here. Mayor Potem Judge, and Mayor Mashburn.
Agenda review. Any changes, any comments, Mr. agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'll note that we have a supplemental on Agenda item 4A and a supplemental on Agenda item 8B as well.
I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only and all further reading be waived.
First. Motion is second.
Motion passes unanimously.
Anybody have any conflict with any of the agenda items tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is 1D1, Presentation of a 25 Year Service Award to Police Records Technician 2, Corinne Barbel. And Chief Livingstone is here for this presentation.
Mayor Mashburn and City Council members, tonight we are recognizing Police Records Technician 2, Corinne Barbel, for 25 years of service to the city of Simi Valley. Corinne, will you please join us down here in the front? Corinne joined the police department on November 29th, 1994, as a PBX operator, and she became a records clerk five months later. In 1999, she transferred to the crime analysis unit where she worked for over 10 years. Corinne has attended multiple training courses over the years. As the computer software developed and changed, she was one of the first in the department to use the new Versadex records management system in 2006. And I can tell you, that system is not the easiest to use either. She quickly became an expert. In 2011, Corinne was selected as the Department's Civilian of the Year. In 2012, Corinne was promoted to Senior Police Records Technician and held that position for four years. Corinne is here tonight with her sons Connor and Owen, husband Brian, mother Eleanor, and many other family and friends. Please join me in congratulating Police Records Technician Corinne Barbel on 25 years of extraordinary service to the city of Simi Valley and thanking her family for their support.
So I'll wait for the chief to come over to make the actual presentation. I think that's only appropriate. And would like to say, you can only imagine the amount of record-keeping that must go on in a police department. And as time moves on, everything has to be so incredibly detailed. So monumental task. Thank you for doing it. And thank you for keeping up with technology because for some of us, it's difficult to even figure out how to turn on our iPad, much less how to get records from years and years ago that are constantly your ask of. So thank you very much. And chief, would you do the honors?
First off, I just really want to thank you for your years of service. 25 years is a long period of time to be in one place. And I think we maybe aren't doing justice when we talk about the versa term system. You know, when I started, we were writing things down on notebook paper and entering things manually. So the transfer to that system was extensive. And there were a lot of people that didn't really do well on that. But you stuck through it and became an expert on it. And I think you've trained a lot of our officers and a lot of our personnel to do it. And I can't thank you enough for your service. That also involves a lot of time away from family and friends and doing things when we have disasters in the city. And so all of our employees step up, and I think you exemplify that. And I'd like to thank you very much for your service. And with that, present you with your certificate for 25 years of dedicated service as an employee of the city of Simi Valley, November 29th, 1994. And with that also, if you see one of them up there.
Just thank you to the mayor and the City Council and all the citizens. I was raised here in Simi Valley. I don't live here anymore, but I'm going to miss everybody when I do retire. It's going to be...
Twenty-five.
Yeah, 25 more years.
If you're ready, you did go to Simi Valley.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next item on the agenda is 1D2, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring February 28th through March 1st, 2020 as Simi Valley Girl Scout Cookie Weekend. And Samantha Argabat is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the City Council. It's that time of year when budding entrepreneurs are greeting you at grocery stores, shopping centers, and your doorstep, all in the name of earning your business to prepare them with leadership and other essential skills to make this next generation of women stronger than the one before. Of course, I am referring to the Girl Scouts Cookie Program. Whereas the year 2020 marks the 103rd year of the Girl Scout Cookie Program, the largest girl-led entrepreneurship program for girls in the world, preparing the next generation of female leaders. And whereas over 1 million Girl Scouts participate in the cookie program each year, with all net proceeds from Girl Scout cookie sales staying local to power year-round experiences for girls. And whereas the Girl Scout Cookie Program teaches five essential skills, goal-setting, decision-making, money management, people skills, and business ethics. And whereas during the last century of selling these iconic cookies, Girl Scouts have demonstrated their exemplary leadership and philanthropic spirit by using their earnings to do remarkable work that reflects the Girl Scouts' mission to make the world a better place. And whereas today, more than 50 million women are Girl Scout alumni, and 2.6 million girls and adult volunteers are active members. And whereas through the dedication, time, and talent of thousands of trained volunteers of different backgrounds, abilities, and areas of expertise, Girl Scouts of California Central Coast, thousands of girls in grades K through 12, in Santa Cruz, San Benito, Monterey, San Luis Obispo, Santa Barbara, and Ventura County, will be participating in the National Girl Scout Cookie Weekend, February 28th through March 1st, 2020. Now therefore, February 28th through March 1st, 2020, is hereby proclaimed Girl Scout Cookie Weekend in the city of Simi Valley to celebrate the impactful program that provides the opportunities for girls to learn entrepreneurial skills. And we'd like to invite the Girl Scouts to come forward to receive their certificate.
Okay, and if I could, I'd like former Girl Scout Councilmember DeeDee Kavanagh to come down. And current...
You were former?
Well, then come on down. Come on down. And I'd also like to invite Ruth Louvenos, a scout leader, to come down, Girl Scout leader. And she brought props for this.
I know. Look at the guy. Very good.
There you go.
and to live by the Girl Scout law.
Okay, couple words changed.
All right, which one is the spokesperson? So you wanted to say something. Tell us about them.
Yes. Okay.
So, "Thanks a lot," it's really good, and they're actually retiring. It's a shortbread cookie with chocolate on the bottom, and it has "thank you" message. And some are actually in different languages. The Mints, my favorite, they're dipped in this minty covering. And I think that they have some mint in the cookie. And Lemonade is another shortbread cookie with lemon glaze. And the Smores, it's a graham cracker cookie with chocolate and marshmallow. It's marshmallow dipped and then chocolate. And the Thanks a lot, it's just a plain shortbread cookie. And the Calm of the Light, it's like this cookie that has coconut and chocolate stripes. And the peanut butter patties, it's kind of like the peanut butter sandwich, but they're different. It's a cookie with peanut butter and then dipped in chocolate. And then the peanut butter sandwich is like an oatmeal cookie with peanut butter filling.
Take chowder.
Apple pie.
I saw 1,450.
...have sold to the wonderfully generous citizens of Simi Valley over $670,000 worth of proceeds right here in Simi Valley to help them go on to do their service projects, their activities, and promote themselves throughout Girl Scouting. The rest of the proceeds stay within our council, which stretches, as you heard, from north all the way down to support Girl Scouting programs. It all stays here. So we thank all of you, over 40 merchants in Simi Valley that have opened their doors to us to sell. We are very, very blessed to live in such a wonderful city that supports us as Girl Scouts.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
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 Sure.
I did, thank you.
I have two.
Look, I know who's just...
Because you know, you know we're going to eat them.
Thank you. It'll be a long night.
Yeah.
Wait. You have to eat them here.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next item on the agenda is 1D3, Presentation of Certificates of Appreciation to Outgoing Special Events Support Review Committee Members. And Linda Swan and Heidi Donardo are here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and City Council. Heidi Donardo, Management Assistant, will be presenting this to the City this evening.
Good evening. This evening, we are recognizing the five members of the Special Events Support Review Committee with certificates of appreciation. The committee is comprised of one member from each of the city's four neighborhood councils and one member from the Council on Aging. These individuals volunteer to serve on one of the more challenging committee assignments, making recommendations for how to distribute city funding for special events, when each and every application for funding is for a very worthy cause. This year, the city was able to reward $25,000 in funding for six nonprofit special events. At this time, I'd like to ask the following individuals present this evening to come up as I read their names. Chair Gina Gooding from Neighborhood Council Number Two. Vice Chair Gail Sutton from Neighborhood Council Number Four. Keith Kelly, Neighborhood Council Number Three. And I'd also like to recognize the following members who were not able to attend this evening or I did not see in the audience. Brent Rollins from Neighborhood Council Number One. And Jerry St. Germain from the Council on Aging. Thank you.
Okay, wait a minute. Say a special thank you, you know. If you've ever been on one of these committees, it's quite challenging because unfortunately, there's not enough dollars to go to everybody. So the committee gets to choose based on applications, on who will receive how much. And you can only imagine what a task that really is. And then it's referred to the council for final approval, which I think generally will be approved. So with that, it's a headache. Fortunately, it doesn't go for long periods of time, I hope. But it's a very worthwhile cause and a very tough job, and we thank you for doing it. Okay, we'll bring the Girl Scouts back in.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next item on the agenda is by a publicly published statement of President Special District Attorney and Division of the Department of State, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, there are no items under VA appointments and free special program. Agenda item 3C, an informational report presented by Youth Council Member Rhea Manimarin.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the City Council. My name is Rhea Manimarin, and I'm currently finishing my junior year at Royal High School. I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to represent our city's youth council. I'd now like to share our recent activities from the past few weeks, as well as our upcoming events. The Simi Valley Youth Town Hall took place on January 17th at the Ronald Reagan Presidential Library and Museum, and it was a complete success. Student turnout and participation exceeded our expectations. The main discussion theme of the event was substance abuse with an emphasis on vaping and e-cigarettes. This theme resonated with our peers as we received a huge influx of student questions and input during our panel discussion. I actually had the opportunity to be a moderator at the event, and while I was nervous to sit up on stage and lead the discussion, all of the panelists proved to share useful advice and tips on the important issues directly affecting our community. I would like to thank the panelists for participating in the event and sharing their knowledge and expertise. I would also like to thank the Ronald Reagan Presidential Library and Museum staff for helping bring such a meaningful event to the youth of Simi Valley. One of our most important upcoming events is our Youth Council's Youth Summit on March 12th, 2020. The Youth Summit is our annual leadership conference, where students congregate to discuss prevalent issues they recognized in their community and develop possible solutions. These solutions are then reviewed by our youth council, prioritized, and then incorporated into our next term's agenda. The theme of the 2020 Youth Summit is "Explore Your Purpose," which was selected to inspire students to use their talents to make a positive difference in the world. We look forward to our motivational speaker, Jenna Edwards, who will speak on aggressive optimism and how she was able to beat difficult life circumstances to overcome trauma, PTSD, and the cycle of poverty. At the Youth Summit, we will also be collecting donations for the nonprofit organization, Schools on Wheels, to support students experiencing homelessness. Last year, we received a large number of donations for the Ventura County Animal Services Simi Valley Shelter, so we look forward to see what this year brings. Applications are still open for students in grades 8 through 12, and the link to the Youth Summit application is www.simi valley.org/youthsummit. Youth Council members are working hard to actively promote the event and maximize student registration. This past summer, five Youth Council representatives attended the Ronald Reagan Student Leadership Program, including myself. As part of the program, we developed a plan to conduct a mental health walkathon that would raise awareness of mental health resources and benefit the Free Clinic of Simi Valley. This walkathon is now in the works for Saturday, May 16th. We're in the early planning stages for the event and look forward to sharing more information as soon as it's available. And last, we are excited to announce that our second annual Youth Council Talent Show is scheduled for May 22nd at the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center. Applications are now open for anyone that would like to compete or showcase their talent in music, dance, singing, and more. Performers are encouraged to submit an online application and a video clip of their act by April 3rd to www.simi valley.org/talentshow. Our regular Youth Council meetings occur every first and third Tuesday of the month throughout the school year. Our meetings usually run from 5:00 PM to 6:00 PM, and the public is invited to attend and provide input during the allotted time. For our next meeting, we will have a special date and location. It will be held on Thursday, March 5th, at the Rancho Simi Recreation and Park District Activity Center, where we will be taking a tour in preparation of our Youth Summit. We are excited to host the event at the RSRPD Activity Center for the first time. Once again, I would like to thank the mayor and the City Council for allowing me the time and opportunity to report on the activities of our youth council. I'm available to answer any and all questions you may have. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
I do. Rhea, that was a wonderful presentation. And can you again say what high school you go to?
I go to... I go to Royal.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Could you tell me why you go to Royal? No, in all seriousness, the Youth Council is such a great program. And I'm looking forward to, it won't be long, we'll see folks from the Youth Council running for council, running for mayor. You are the future leaders, and hopefully you'll get involved at a very young age because you're so knowledgeable in what's going on, and it's your future, and you should be the one guiding the way we go. So thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Mayor, if I may ask a couple questions of Rhea? This is for the audience, I already know the answer. Is, I know the Youth Summit is on a school day, so if students apply to go, will they be excused from school?
Yes, it is a school-excused absence.
Okay, so it is a school-excused absence if they attend the Youth Summit. Okay. And the second question is, what topics will be covered at the Youth Summit?
We actually have a large range of topics that if you apply, you actually get to choose. So I can give you some examples, teen health, substance abuse, homelessness, and then topics like that.
Okay, thank you, Rhea.
Yeah, no problem.
to, it won't be long, we'll see folks from the Youth Council running for council, running for mayor. You are the future leaders, and hopefully you'll get involved at a very young age because you're so knowledgeable in what's going on, and it's your future, and you should be the one guiding the way we go. So thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Mayor, if I may ask a couple of questions of Rhea? This is for the audience, I already know the answer. Is, I know the Youth Summit is on a school day, so if students apply to go, will they be excused from school?
Yes, it is a school-excused absence.
Okay, so it is a school-excused absence if they attend the Youth Summit, okay. And the second question is, what topics will be covered at the Youth Summit?
We actually have a large range of topics that if you apply, you actually get to choose. So I can give you some examples, teen health, substance abuse, homelessness, and then topics like that.
Thank you, Rhea.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next item on the agenda is public hearings. This is a time and place set for public hearings on the consideration of matters as presented on this agenda. Let the record show that due notice was given as required by law, and an affidavit to this effect is on file in the city clerk's office. The reports of the city staff relating to these matters shall be made as part of the record of this meeting. Speakers during the public hearing shall limit their comments to matters relevant to the item on the agenda, and may be ruled out of order if comments are unrelated to the item. If you challenge in court any of the council decisions made here tonight, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing. The time within which judicial review must be sought is governed by the California Code of Civil Procedure Section 1094.6. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Agenda Item 4A, A Continued Public Hearing to Consider an Appeal of the Planning Commission's Decision to Approve Conditional Use Permit CUP-S-826. And Stratus Perels and Sean Gibson are here for this presentation. Mr. Mayor, you may begin the public hearing.
Thank you. So rather than repeating what she just said, we'll start with the public hearing portion. I do want to go a slight bit out of order. I have information that the developer would like to speak on some negotiations that have taken place between the appellate and the developer, and would like to discuss that at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members. As little as 15 minutes ago, there were still discussions going on. I'm happy to say we have a signed MOU, an agreement between the HOA and the developer, that alleviates some of the concerns on both sides. I want to thank the mayor for reaching out to me multiple weeks ago to reach out to the homeowners group and see if I could come up with some options. What he first suggested was a little difficult, but after a lot of pencil sharpening and working on it, we came up with something we thought would make sense for both sides. The only concern I have going forth tonight because of the delays that have taken place, I'd like the council to consider, and this has been items that you've done before, rather than, let me step back, I'm going to bring both the appellant and my partner, Mr. Gorian, up to share with you what they've agreed upon, because they've been doing negotiations. But one thing I want to implore upon council, because the amount of time that's been used up already, I'd like this to go back for a staff hearing approval. I've already conferred with staff. This meets their requirements, it meets what they've done before. It does allow the appellant's that if there's something that we don't do that we said we're going to do, they'll be invited to that hearing. They still have the right at that time to move the appeal forward, and it would come back at that time. But again, in the essence of expediency, knowing the staff-level difficulties you have at the staff levels right now in the city, all the reports, most of this has all been done, there's no reason this can't be handled at a staff level. That would expedite the process, and we certainly appreciate that. So, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, at this time, before you launch into a staff report, I'd like to invite the appellant, Mr. Gorian, up. They can tell you what's been agreed to in here, and then you can decide how you want to proceed. And thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I apologize. Yes, we can go in that order. And are you good with that, Mr. Perels? Anybody that has speaker cards in, this does not mean you will not be able to speak. So we're just getting a little bit out of order in the front end, but you'll certainly have opportunity to speak if you wish.
Here's something you guys never thought you'd say.
I could hug him if you like. Mr. Mayor, City Council members, my name is Stephen Roseman from Roseman Law. We are counsel representing the Marketplace Master Association. We have gone back and forth with the developer in trying to reach a resolution. As you know, the master filed the appeal, which is presented before you this evening. We have reached a memorandum of understanding that does address the significant issues that are of concern to the association, and we believe, based on the execution of this document and the developer signing it, as well as the association, that it would probably be in, for time, expedient point of view, as well as not wasting City Council's time at this point, to continue the appeal process for a sufficient time to be able to submit, whether it's a revised CUP, whatever the administrative process is, if we could avoid having to go back to Planning Commission to address these issues. So we look to your guidance on how best to deal with it.
Great, thank you. Mr. Gorian.
Thank you. I would just add that, first of all, reiterate what Mr. Kunicke, my partner, said. We were contacted by the mayor, it's something that we didn't have to do this, but, you know, we're local guys, we're members of the community, and sometimes you get more with honey than you do with vinegar, right? And he asked us, you know, would you look at this again? And we did. And so I'm happy the way it turned out. I think everybody's happy on both sides. It's better, it's going to work better for everybody. The one thing I would say is, there's not really much to look at. The Planning Commission's already looked at the whole project. The only thing that happened is, one of the buildings is being deleted. So if you really want to picture it, you can just put your thumb up where that building is, and everything else looks exactly the same. And we're developing some more parking in that space. So we would be very appreciative. This project has already been delayed five months since when we got Planning Commission approval. We had unanimous Neighborhood Council approval, we had Planning Commission approval. So to the extent that you could kind of rush us through the process, you know, there's nothing that you're going to see other than one of the buildings is gone. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You know, very rarely does an attorney not have to argue things, and then somebody's non-attorney put forward his best leg in the argument of this process, but I have nothing further to add, other than just to get guidance from council.
We appreciate. Okay, do we want to hear from Stratus? Yeah. Mr. Perels?
Well, based on the testimony we just rec-
I'm sorry, I'm hoping that what you're going to do is explain what, the elimination of a building.
Yeah. So, based on the testimony we just received, the applicant and the appellant have agreed to a modification. This project was previously approved by the City Planning Commission. It was appealed to the City Council, and that's what brought it here tonight. If, for some reason, the appellant would like to continue this matter, this was a duly-notice public hearing, if they're requesting a continuance, we could continue this to, let's say, a date certain. In the meantime, they can work out these details, and if it's to the appellant's satisfaction, they could withdraw their appeal. That's one option going forward. This was a duly-notice public hearing. We can proceed ahead tonight with our presentation, and let any member of the public speak that wants to speak tonight, and then at the conclusion of that, again, do a continuance as well, and then come to some sort of conclusion. But it could just result in the applicant withdrawing their appeal and allowing this modification to go forward through the normal administrative staff levels, if the City Council feels comfortable that they understand what's happening tonight with the project.
Okay, could you go into detail, there was two methods that I'm aware of. One that was just mentioned by the attorney and Mr. Kunicke, and then one where it returns down the road to the council. So could you go in detail so the council's aware of what?
Okay, so let's say one option is, just like this project was approved at the Planning Commission, if it had never been appealed, and the application was going to be changed at that time in the manner that Mr. Gorian just described, we would process what staff calls a modification to the project. And we call that administrative action, or modification, depending on how much change is occurring. And so this is done at the staff level, where we review the changes to make sure it meets all the code requirements. So that's one option. The other option is, if you, the City Council wants to be the reviewing body in this matter, we could, you know, have the public hearing here tonight, continue the matter to a date certain, and show you whatever changes might have been agreed upon by the appellant and the applicant, and the City Council can review that at an upcoming public hearing and concur that all the changes have been made in accordance with their direction.
And let me, if I could suggest, the cleanest way, based on all the different constituencies, this is just one option, is if the council's inclined, after the testimony, to go with whatever that MOU is, you have the staff come back here with those changes in the staff report, and you can approve the project with all those changes at that meeting, if that's what you want to do. So that's one way where, because the public may not know, others may not know exactly what all the changes would be, although it has been represented, just the elimination of the building, but it may be a little more involved as far as things, as far as you don't know what you're approving exactly. So that way, there's, the hearing continues to another date, and when you finally approve it, it's done, and you know exactly what you've approved. But that's just, you know, one option.
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we're not necessarily approving the project or disapproving the project, we're just looking at the appeal.
Well, the formal, let's say, you have whatever the changes are, you're allowed on appeal to approve a changed project. You have that power. So if the applicant and the appellant submit and agree on the changes, then you can look at that and just approve it, and that's the end of the appeal. The project approved with those changes, and that would be formally the appeal itself. So there's some difficulties in just dropping the appeal and so forth, so that's one way to do it that would satisfy all the different legal rights that everyone has in the proceeding, and you'd be able to know what exactly you're approving.
Mr. Eldridge, would that change the timing of the notification that has to be given? Because I know there's a certain amount of days we have to give notification for people for a hearing of the appeal and even of the MOU, so would that push the applicant's ability to pursue this project further back?
No, because the standard notification that the clerk does for the continuation of appeal would apply. So whatever that standard the clerk does for the next date would be sufficient for the notification.
Okay, and what are the implications if the MOU does not, you know, come together, and there's no agreement on the MOU? Would we be back where we're at right now?
Yes. If it turns out that the MOU doesn't stick for some reason, and I understand the representations that it is sticking, then at the next meeting, the council could then basically start over and say, okay, there's no deal, we're just going to go with how it was.
Okay.
Are we looking for a motion to that effect?
Well, there's an additional issue of those who came to speak on the hearing as it is, and, you know, it would be customary to hear them, whoever in the public wants to do it now, although they may moderate their comments based on the fact that the deal looks like it's changing.
Okay, based on that, could we have the report that was originally scheduled? Because that's what the public was, you know, had noticed that they were going to receive, and the opportunity for the public to give comments.
That's up to the whole council, as to what report you want.
I'm fine with letting, you're prepared to give your staff report, correct?
Yes.
May I ask, does that staff report include the specifics of the MOU?
No.
It does not. So, may I ask, in addition to that report, we also get the specifics of the MOU, so that those who are here to testify are aware of, I just think there needs to be some specificity before everyone, I mean, I just think it would be helpful for everyone to hear that.
Well, I'm thinking what we're looking at is just bringing it back after they look at it. We don't want to get into the weeds of designing the project or having to do with, that's up to planning and the applicant.
We may end up coming back to the original MOU anyways, the original project as planned.
I agree, but if I'm understanding what has just occurred, it's possible that the applicant or the appellant has withdrawn their appeal tonight by signing this MOU, if I'm not mistaken. Is that accurate?
That's not legally what they've done. I'll just speak up, because they have to do it, if they were going to do that, they would have to do it by 5:00 p.m. on Friday, actually. And so that's a formal matter, our code wouldn't allow, even the signing of the MOU is not the withdrawal of the appeal.
Go ahead and read it all.
I'm sorry?
Read it all. Read the staff report.
Yeah, yeah, let's go with, go ahead and continue with your report, Mr. Perels.
Lucy here, the panel? Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for this. So a little bit of background, this project is an appeal of a prior Planning Commission decision, but we've given you a little bit of chronology of how we got here tonight. Back in 2005, the appellant's, the Marketplace Homeowners Association site was developed, and this site was approved for a mixed-use zoning with 72 townhomes, 36 senior apartments, and originally with about 12,000 square feet of commercial space at the corner of Tappo and Eileen. Subsequent to that, a municipal code amendment was adopted. This was in conjunction with our Housing Element Update, where the state of California required all cities in California to add single-room occupancy unit land use type in their zoning district, in their development code. And so the city of Simi Valley did add that. We added the single-room occupancy land use to primarily just the commercial plan development zone and zones with a mixed-use overlay. In August of 2018, the applicant applied for a mixed-use project originally. That was going to consist of 47 multifamily units and 1,500 square feet of commercial, but that project was difficult to make compliant with our development code, so that application was withdrawn. Or, actually, the application was amended and revised to become the current 62-room, single-room occupancy project that's being presented tonight. It was presented to the Planning Commission in October of 2019, at which time they did approve the project by a 4-0 vote with one abstention. That decision was appealed by the Marketplace Homeowners Association, and that has brought us here tonight. So that's overall chronology. Senior Planner Sean Gibson will navigate both the project, the appeal, the basis for the appeal, and staff's recommendations.
Thank you, and good evening. Again, the applicant is Colton Lee Communities. They proposed the 62-unit project shown on the vicinity map here, Tappo Street and Eileen The general plan designation is mixed-use, general commercial mixed-use, and it is zoned for commercial plan development with the mixed-use overlay, where SROs or single-room occupancies are permitted, subject to approval of their conditional use permit. For vicinity, the project site abouts Tappo Street and is part of the larger mixed-use project approved in 2005. That includes 72 townhomes, 36 senior apartments in this location, and the original site was designated for approximately 12,000 square feet of commercial space that has never been developed at this point. The 62 SRO units are located in two-three-story buildings. The units range in size from 430 to 800 square feet, containing a single room with a kitchenette and bathroom. This rendering is of the larger building proposed at Tappo and Eileen Streets. There will be various onsite amenities, which are addressed in the staff report, particularly a rooftop deck, which is provided for residential use, as indicated in this rendering. And as you heard, the Marketplace Master Association filed the appeal on November 1st, and they're the ones representing the adjacent townhome community. And they provided four grounds for the appeal, and staff is providing a response to each of those grounds. The first one is the city failing to comply with the government code to deem the project in compliance with all of the city's plans, programs, policies, ordinances, and standards prior to a Planning Commission hearing. In response, since staff found the project in compliance with all city standards, there is no specific need to notify the applicant that it was not in compliance, because in fact, it was in compliance. The second ground was that the city failed to deny the project based on the fact that it would have a specific adverse impact on public health and safety due to the nature of the parking situation that would be created on Tappo Street. So in response to that, a parking study was not required or requested for the proposed parking space along Tappo Street. It is very common for diagonal parking spaces to back into a public street, also as exists on Eileen Street currently. Any sort of maneuvering from a parking space to a roadway requires due care, and a safety study to reflect that effect was not requested by staff or by majority of the Planning Commission to warrant an additional study. The third ground was that the exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act did not address significant impacts from traffic and safety. In response, the, all projects, including this project, was reviewed for impacts to traffic- traffic, safety, noise, air quality, water quality, and other possible effects pursuant to CEQA. These items fall within the review thresholds of the general plan, and when these findings of no significant impacts are made, this allows the categorical exemption 15332 of the CEQA guidelines for infill developments, less than five acres, to be exempt from further environmental review. Specifically, in regards to traffic, the city did review the traffic memo submitted by the applicant's traffic engineer, and the conclusions confirmed by the city show that 522 daily trips would occur with the project, which is only three additional daily trips over the originally entitled commercial project, and was determined not to be a significant effect, thus supporting the original CEQA exemption. Lastly, the fourth ground of appeal was that the project is removing at least seven of the association's parking spaces. Pursuant to the, according to the applicant, there are no parking spaces within the townhome common area that are being removed. There are six parking spaces on the commercial portion that are being relocated. Here on this exhibit shows the existing layout of the vacant lot. On the northern half of the property, the smaller lot, there are six existing parking spaces, which is on the applicant's property. These will be relocated to the south side of the driveway, south side of the vacant parcel there, so there'd be no net loss of parking. The site exhibit here shows the relocated parking spaces. Lastly, the project is subject to the Housing Accountability Act, and the strict findings must be made to make a project denial. For this project, and with the facts presented on traffic and parking, and under the current standards, there is a reasonable determination that the project is in full compliance with all health and safety standards. Therefore, the city council's discretion is limited on the project, and essentially the appeal would have to be denied, and the project therefore approved on the factual record as it currently exists. And staff does recommend you adopt a resolution denying the appeal and upholding the planning commission's approval of CUPS 826, and a determination that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. That concludes my presentation, and we can discuss the future revisions, if you'd like.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody from the public who wish to be heard?
Mr. Mayor, do you, just based on the prior discussion, do you want to have any more description of what might be in that MOU before the public, or not? I mean, it's up to you guys.
Well, I would have that in the next order, but, how many cards do we have?
We have two speaker cards.
Two speaker cards, love us. Okay, let's go ahead and let them speak.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just approach?
Yeah, are you one of the two speaker cards?
I am not, but I can be.
Okay, fill out a card when you get a chance.
Okay, there's a reason for the lack of cards. My name's Don Douglas, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Representatives, Tizzy's staff. The reason for the lack of interest cards is the homeowners of the Marketplace are not up to speed on the MOU details. So they do have cards filled out, but there was some confusion on how this process was going to play itself out. So I think with explanation of the MOU points may help our homeowners understand better where we're at right now.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, good, we plan on doing that. Thank you. Okay, the attorney for the appellant. I guess you're speaking for the HOA, correct, sir?
That is correct.
Oh, thank you.
I'm going to keep it very brief, only because I just wanted to highlight one or two points in the memorandum of understanding. A copy has been given for your review as well, and we have a signed copy of the document. The one concern I have, and the reason I do agree with the city attorney as far as continuing the appeal, is that there are specific terms agreed to in the memorandum of understanding, and we're uncertain at this point. We don't see any concern with the city or the planning director in approving this as a administrative process, but if there are issues that come on, come up through this process, there is a specific provision in that document that says if these terms are not agreed to, the memorandum of understanding would effectively become unenforceable, and then we'd be back to where we are effectively tonight. So that's one of the reasons we would like this appeal continued to a later date, to afford us an opportunity to ensure that everything that has been incorporated in the document can then be addressed by the city and the city's accepting those changes or proposals.
Okay, great, thank you. Could we see the, or hear what the items in the MOA are?
Again, I pointed out earlier-
MOU.
Pardon?
MOU.
I pointed out earlier that the appellant still has the right to appeal at the time it goes to a staff approval, because they'll be invited that meeting, the same radius mailing goes out. So they still have the right, if we didn't follow what was in the MOU, to go ahead and still be able to pull another appeal, rather than continue this process for a longer period of time. I think what'd be good, that might assuage some of the concerns here, maybe we point out what's actually, has changed, just so you understand. Mr. Gorian, would you come up here at the same time with me? I want to be sure, he was doing the negotiations, I want to be sure I got accurate numbers for you folks. The main thing is, the small building to the north is leaving. It's gone. With that building being gone, we're going to go ahead and exercise and move that into a parking lot area. Depending on what staff at their level decides we need for landscaping along Tappo, we're anticipating anywhere from 10 to 20 additional spaces there. The other thing is, what's happened with those units? It was at the planning commission, and Mr. Mayor, I think it was your planning commissioner pointed out, that we sort of didn't really meet the exact requirements, SROs, because we had some larger units, and he at that time suggested, well, how come we didn't go smaller? So, taking the lead off that, and your request, Mr. Mayor, of eliminating that building, we've moved those units over to the large building. So we're going to shrink some of the square footage down. On average, they're going to pretty much stay the same as what the smaller units were going to be now. By shrinking those, we are still going to lose two units, so we're actually losing the potential of income on those two units. So that alleviates some of the parking concerns that the HOA had, and I will, I want to remind you, those parking concerns were not generated by this project. They were generated by the HOA, unfortunately, because there's been a memorandum of understanding, I'm sorry, there's been a shared parking agreement that's been in place since we developed that original site, some odd 15 years back. So everybody moved in there, signed that agreement, that they would be using their garages for parking, and those other spaces were for guests, and they would be shared with whatever developed up in the front site. But again, knowing that they had some concerns on that, and the mayor reaching out to us, we went ahead and tried to figure out another design that would alleviate some of their concerns for parking. And I'm going to allow Mr. Gorian to step in here in a second and tell you what we've agreed to as far as parking onsite. There were a couple other minor items they wanted. Hours of operation on the roof deck, they wanted that to end by 10:00. We totally agree with that. They wanted setback from that rear wall, so people weren't looking down onto the units. They wanted 10-foot setback, we agreed to that. Those are minor, just simple changes can be done at staff level. And again, keep in mind, by eliminating the one building, footprint of the main building is not changing. There's some architectural change inside taking place that can be handled again at staff level during design check. The MOU is going to carry and can be conditioned by staff that we follow what's in that MOU. So again, you have the vehicle to send this back to staff for a staff-level approval. Now, for a little more detail on what was agreed to in the MOU, I'd like Mr. Gorian to address that for you, and certainly welcome the attorney to come back up if he hears anything that he's in disagreement with, but it's pretty simple. This is not rocket science, where this has to go back to the planning commission, frankly. This is simple stuff that can be handled at the staff level. And again, I want to remind you, you're all aware of the staffing issues. I'm sure Mr. Stratus would let you know that, we see it down there all the time. You send it back for planning commission, there's a whole bunch more reports and stuff that has to be done. It's going to be more staffing level time that can be used on other projects, so I urge you to consider that, just geographically, from what it may mean to staff. Mr. Gorian?
Thanks, Dean. I'll keep this quick as also. I don't know, Sean, if you're able to pull up the site plan. So basically, what happened is, we looked for some middle ground with the HOA, and we, as we said, we agreed to delete the building on the northerly portion of the property, and that'll change to parking. And then furthermore, we agreed to limit almost all of the parking that exists within the boundaries of the townhomes. That will be for the HOA only. There's two or three, I think, that are shared, thanks, Dean, that are shared. But for the most part, so our parking will be all along here, and then we'll, we've all agreed to share and work together on Eileen Street. And I don't know if you're able to see the building that's over here, that'll be gone, and that'll be parking. We've agreed to limit the total number of units to 60 units. The footprint of the building will be the same. There might be some little tweaks on the outside with windows moving, but the short story is, you see these big units here? Those will now be small units. They fit into the same pod, so for the most part, you know, with some, maybe on corners, there'll be some little revisions, but for the most part, they'll be just about exactly the same. And again, I think this is just an example of, you know, we were all kind of fighting each other, and somebody looked at this from the outside and said, can you do this a little bit differently? And I think that was good counsel. So we did it, and we got together, and I'm sorry that this happened, we literally just signed this thing outside in the lobby. But I think it's a good plan, everybody seems relatively happy, and we do not, we'd like to limit how long this takes. I mean, the name of the game is getting housing to satisfy these numbers, right? And this is a good place to get it, so we've already waited five months, the file, the project got approved five months ago. And my understanding is that the city's dark in March anyway, so all it's doing really is kicking the process way down the road for us if we don't do it tonight. Again, as I said, I can just summarize like this. You see this project? That one's gone. That's it. So with that, we respectfully request that you do allow us to do this at the staff level and move us forward. Thank you. We're available for any questions.
One additional item, and then I'm done also. You heard from Mr. Douglas, who said the homeowners haven't had a chance to review this. You all know, in the past, I've been an elected official, you folks are all elected officials, and we're elected by people to make decisions for them. An HOA board, and I've served on one also, are pretty much the same. You elect the board to make the decisions for you. Now, the current board at the HOA raised all these issues, and frankly, I have to tell you, when we initially started this project, I went door-to-door for the buildings that abutted this project. We had zero opposition. Matter of fact, they were anxious to see a bill, told us commercially what they'd like to see as far as a coffee shop and stuff. We ceased knocking on doors. Their board got a hold of it and sort of blew this thing up, and sent out letters to their HOA, you know, it could be Section 8 housing, it could be affordable housing, so on and so on, which was never the intent. So the board sort of created this turmoil, so now to ask to be able to go back to the homeowners, when they've already made the decision on behalf of the homeowners, and Mr. Douglas, it's my understanding, was involved in these negotiations, so he understands them very well, again, to me would be just another delay that doesn't need to be. Their HOA board, just like HOA boards I've served on, as you as city council, me when I was elected, we make decisions based on those that elected us to those positions. And I'd like you to take that in consideration here, again, not delay this process, but go ahead and allow the decision be made, so we can move forward on this at the staff level. Thank you, we're available for questions if you have any.
Thank you. If you'd like to speak, sir.
I was so close to hugging the developer, and then, of course, he had to come forward with a statement that I'd just like to make very clear to the council. There was significant opposition by the homeowners. The reason the board took action was because homeowners said to the board, we need you to take action to deal with this project. There were significant number of town hall meetings of the HOA where we had many, many homeowners attending, and if you recall, if you had the opportunity to observe the recording or the live feed for the planning commission hearing, I think it's quite clear, there were many, many homeowners, independent of the board of directors, that attended and showed significant opposition to this project. And I do want to compliment the board on working with the developer in working a resolution despite unnecessary antagonistic statements that were just made a minute ago. I'm not going to address any of them, but it's very clear, when you look at the planning commission hearing, the significant opposition to the project. But I think the compromise was made with the intent to work together to reach a resolution, and unless there's any other questions, once again, just reiterate that the appeal gets continued to a date convenient to the council, and we hope we can work through these issues, get them done. I think it's sufficiently detailed, but no doubt staff will advise if there's any issues that need to be addressed.
Thank you. There was two speaker cards? Yeah, we let them speak.
Joseph Lampick?
Mr. Mayor, city people, like council. I live here, on Eileen Street, or on Tappo and Winifred there.
Sir, if you can speak into the microphone, it's hard to hear you.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry, I live on Winifred Street, one of these townhomes, and I would say, nobody ever came to my house and asked me if I was in favor of this, and I've been to some of the city council meetings. And like a lot of people, I'm not aware of the new developments that have taken place. But I haven't, I've been to some meetings, and I haven't heard anything positive about it. And I'm not going to fault anybody for trying to have, you know, affordable housing, or lift themselves up, but I mean, it was a planning, and I know there's the issue with the parking, which was a lot of, a big concern for a lot of us, and I know when I moved in, I bought my home, and maybe I didn't read everything about the parking that maybe I should have. But now, since the new developments have come through, I just think it needs to be examined, you know, for the impact on the neighborhoods that are adjacent to the, to this development. Like, there's a small, the small, the small, single-story homes that are in the back, the parking across the street, I mean, a lot of, even, my neighbors, I have a couple of them that are moving now, and the rumor is they're moving because of the project. I don't know if this is true, but there are a few people selling their homes now, once the project has been kind of more sped up, so. I think that's about all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rebecca Alvaron?
Hi, good evening. My name is Rebecca Alvaron, and I am here in support of the single-room occupancy development. I actually first heard about this project at the task force on homelessness. That was on the 13th. Council member Ruth Levinos was there, and Mayor Pro Tem Mike Judge was also there. They did a presentation on the various types of housing, and, you know, specifically, you know, was about homelessness and ways to address it. So this project was brought up, and there was a presentation, and they did a really good job, which, you know, got me excited about the options that are coming across, that developers are bringing, and also the fact that, you know, it's not just single-story or single-family housing that is being approved or coming through the planning commission and the city council, kind of like alternative, you know, housing options, and I think that it's really great. One of the things I wanted to say, I don't know if I dare I say it, but it's almost like a millennial dream, you know? They look real- They look really nice, but beyond that, I think that what got me really interested was the affordability, you know, aspect to it. And there are a lot of young adults in Simi Valley, a lot of people that have to leave Simi Valley, who have, you know, lived here, been raised here, have gone through the school system, have gone away to college, come back, are young adults, are now, you know, in the workforce and just don't have available affordable, housing really, and much less affordable, even if you are, you know, a young professional. So I think this is a really good option. I guess one of my questions would be to the developer in regards to the rental, the cost regarding the SROs. I know that there is a range in regards to the square footage of them, but that is one question I have. I don't think I saw it in the report. I think they mentioned it at the Task Force on Homelessness, but I don't want to say it because I don't want to get excited about it if it's not true. So, you know, I think that it's really positive and I think that, you know, we have young people here tonight that are able to see projects like this come up and kind of see, you know, where the city is going as far as providing housing for them. So it's not just about being able to afford, you know, a $600,000 home, but, you know, where can I afford to live now? So I think that that is, that it's a good project and, you know, I like that they were able to work together with the surrounding neighborhood to bring forth a project, you know, that is more amendable to them. I do feel like there is an inequitable input sometimes regarding the neighborhoods that are there and then the other, you know, there isn't as much input from other people because we're not really paying attention, right? No one's really knocking on our doors unless we're really actively involved in local city politics. We don't get much of a say in what's being built unless we're very local to those projects and developments. I did want to, you know, I did want to point something out that I think bothered me a lot today about one of the comments, which was regarding like low-income housing and Section 8. There's nothing wrong with that. You know, I think there's nothing wrong, you know, that you're poor and that you have to have a place to live. We literally have people sleeping outside of City Hall. You know, there was a cart that was outside of one of the city council members' offices, you know? I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong with being poor, you know? I think that it's negative to say, you know what, no, you know what, they didn't want it there because it was low-income housing and Section 8. Because there's a lot of negative stereotypes that are attached to that. I think that, you know, people should have the ability to have a place to live, you know, and if there's an affordable aspect to it, then that's great. You know, then if they can afford to live there or if they need help to live there, you know, I think that that's great too. So overall, I am in support of the project. I didn't really quite understand, there was like an appeal to support the project, so I don't know if that can be kind of clarified a little bit more because it sounds like they were in compliance and it got through the Planning Commission, but then now there's an appeal on it, so maybe that can be clarified. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I also wanted to state that there are eight cards submitted in Opposition 24A who did not wish to speak and their names will be noted for the record.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this time rebuttal. Mr. Stratus, if you have any.
Well, I was going to say much rebutted, but at least hopefully clarify some questions. Very succinctly, I just wanted to summarize the changes. It's going from, what's being discussed tonight is to reduce the buildings from two buildings to one, to reduce the total number of units from 62 to 60, to modify the floor plans where right now, the original project was approved around, you know, for 400, 500 and 800 square foot units to predominantly 400 square foot units all around in the new one building. To change the second building pad and make that a parking lot to accommodate from 10 to 20 vehicles is the, until we sketch it out, we'll figure out that part. There is some additional items here in the MOU regarding to utilities being paid by the developer, so it doesn't affect the homeowners association, about the rooftop deck and the curfew and site designing it to have the least impact on the neighbors and a few other general items. But I just want to give a clear understanding of what the change is from what's being originally proposed to what we're seeing here tonight.
Okay, questions, council?
Yes, Mayor, if I may ask staff questions. So the units would be reduced by two units and the additional parking, how many? I just want to clarify, one of the comments that was made was that the original plan or the original agreement was the shared parking agreement. The townhomes would use the garages and other spaces would be shared. So the, I just want to understand the appeal. The appeal was that the HOA did not want to share those parking spaces, as was previously agreed, with the new development. Is that correct or with the commercial space? Because there was already commercial space, as I looked at the timeline, there's already commercial, at 1.12,000 feet of commercial space planned there. So there would be a need for parking regardless, right? At some point, at a certain point in time. So that agreement for shared parking was because of that planned commercial. Is that correct?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I don't know if you have the overall parking plan, Sean. So the, the site currently has a few parking spaces on the site that Sean indicated earlier that would be eliminated and relocated. And what's being added new to the project is the angled parking along Tappo Street, similar to the parking configuration on Eileen. So that's a new addition of parking. The applicant was looking at this, this slide on the screen right now shows where parking is available on the property. In the brown are all the garage parking spaces that belong to the townhouse residence. That's private parking for them only. The pink shows available outdoor parking. On the bottom there of the screen, you see Eileen Street. That's available shared parking down there. The blue shows new parking be added by this project and the green actually shows a couple of additional spaces that might be able to be added through some restriping efforts. So that is the overall parking plan for the entire site. The yellow belongs to, is designated for the senior units that are in the upper quadrant there of the project site. And so that's what the parking arrangement would be with the project as is originally considered. Now, what we're looking at is that northernmost blue area, the area where the blue is located where Sean's highlighting, that could be all made into parking lot for maybe 10 to 20 vehicles right there. So that would be the parking plan for this project.
Okay. And my other question is, well, I have several questions. As it is, the Planning Commission approved this four to one. Is that correct?
Actually, it's four to zero with one abstention.
Okay, four to zero. So this was approved by the Planning Commission as is?
Correct.
Okay. And this does meet the requirements of the Housing Affordability Act?
Accountability Act.
I'm sorry, Housing Accountability Act, I'm sorry.
And in staff's opinion, it meets the required findings where the city's, does it have as much discretion to make any changes there?
Okay, so should the, because, you know, right now, everyone is operating on the, you know, presumption that the MOU will be, you know, final and we don't know that. That is a presumption that everyone is making. So should the MOU fall apart and this comes back to the city council, according to the Housing Accountability Act, you know, it would meet the legal requirements as is?
Yeah.
Okay. And the question I had, you know, there were comments that were made in the report about safe walking distance and, you know, the parking issues in terms of the traffic impact. And the traffic impact was not significant enough to merit another traffic study. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And was there any consideration for, in the Planning Commission meeting, for the overall community need for housing?
That was discussed, it was a long, very long meeting. We actually had a couple of, two, actually, public hearings where we had a lot of public testimony as well as other commentary from the Planning Commission. And the overall need, and this is really like kind of that first rung in the housing ladder, to get an adult child out of their parents' house, you know, an affordable option out there that doesn't currently exist. This would be the first SRO project that I'm aware of in Ventura County and it's a very unique type of project that we hope, if it's successful, might lead to more of them. But yeah, all those topics were discussed at the Planning Commission.
Okay. My other question is, and I don't know if you can answer this or if Mr. Eldridge might need to answer this question or do more research on it. Can that part of the MOU of imposing what essentially is a curfew on the residents of this SRO project, can that legally even be imposed?
Oh, they're not talking about an overall, they're talking about the outdoor roof deck on top.
Yes, the outdoor 10 o'clock PM.
And that's property management. If they want to self, you know, create a rule that says that it's not going to be used after 10:00 PM, that's perfectly fine for them to implement.
Stratus, couldn't we add a condition that does that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
So we could condition the project to have that.
This is a conditional use permit and if there's something about the operational characteristics of the use that you would like to, that's within the purview of a CUP.
Okay. My other question is, the overall plan for this area, for this region of the city was intentionally mixed use. Is that correct?
Correct. The general plan designation for this property is mixed use. This area was targeted for infill development of this sort to add more residential units to help support the existing underperforming commercial area that this is. There's a lot of vacant commercial development in this area and by adding more higher-density housing, the goal is to hopefully infuse new life into those commercial areas.
So by building more housing in this mixed-use area, this targeted mixed-use area, that would support our local businesses?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And this entire, when was that mixed-use overlay added into the general plan? Was this something that just happened six months ago or a year ago or how long has that been there?
I think this area of the city has had a mixed-use designation even before our 2012 general plan update, so it might have even predated that, but the area here has been given this designation. It's just the development market doesn't always respond to when we put a color on the map. It takes sometimes a long time, a lot of effort. And as we discussed earlier, we tried a series of projects on the site, solely commercial projects and mixed-use development, but with all the rules and really the challenges of finding parking availability for the site, making a project that met all the rules is how we evolved to the SRO project that's before you.
Okay, so the public has had notification of the mixed-use overlay for this region for at least eight years. Is that correct?
That designation has been in place for quite some time, yes.
Okay, so I just, you know, I just want to clarify because, you know, there is rumors going around that it's new or it's, you know, but at least for eight years that you recall, this mixed-use overlay has been there and at least since 2014, SROs have been allowed in commercial, so for six years at least, people have known that this is available to develop there. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that because, you know, sometimes there's commentary that, you know, there was no notion or no idea. And this quarter has been targeted for, you know, in order to help support our local businesses. Is that correct? That's why, that's why the need for the mixed-use?
Yeah. Everything you see on the screen right there from Cochran South and Los Angeles Avenue has that same designation. It's just that sometimes there's long-term leases or just a lack of interest to redevelop property. Obviously, this site's vacant and lends itself very easily for this type of project. I can't really tell you with how much certainty the whole district is going to turn over, but maybe incrementally, we might get a few projects along the way down that area.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a, just a quick question. And we'll have time for statements later, I assume. Is that right? Just a quick question. So by elimination of this second building, what is the square footage then of just the building that remains?
Let's see if we can do a quick calculation.
Sorry, I just...
That's a good question.
Forty-one thousand one hundred and seventy square feet. Pardon?
Forty-one thousand one hundred and forty-five square feet.
Forty-one thousand one, with all three fours. Okay. Gotcha. And just to clarify, the anticipated parking spaces that will be captured by the removal of this building, you anticipate anywhere 10 to 20? Was that...
So, yeah, with the elimination of the second building, the applicant believes that they can get maybe 10 to 20 spaces striped in there. We'll take a good look at it and be creative to see if we can maximize that area.
Gotcha. Good. Thank you. That's questions for now.
Okay. No questions? Okay.
I'm sorry, can I just, one more quick question? And I don't know if it's in the plan or not. I'm sorry, Mayor. Is there any plan for that, that additional parking space, 10, 12 for plug-in vehicles?
That's up to the developer. I don't see anything in the MOU, but if they are so inclined, we wouldn't discourage it.
Just an idea. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. This time, let's just go with council comments. Comments, not questions.
Okay, I'd love to make a couple of comments. I will say that, and I don't know, we did our disclosures, but normally we were the first. I have met with both the homeowners association presidency and with the developers and so it's been, it's been very informative to meet with all sides that are concerned with this. I want to actually commend the parties for having discussion about, about this MOU. My discussion with the homeowners association, I got very clearly that they are not opposed to development, not opposed to building. They just wanted it to be something that was not, that was not hugely impactful to their, their standard of their current living circumstance. And of course, they were concerned about safety, et cetera. I will say that I think that this MOU, as it has been explained and developed, is ideal. Some of the concerns I had separate from the appeal actually are being addressed with this MOU. First of all, if you read the definition of an SRO, granted, we're still developing in our own code exactly what it means for Simi Valley, but in general, it is a 250, 300, 350 square foot living, one-room living space. And some of the larger spaces as they were being designed, in my mind, I thought, is this trying to be a one-bedroom end run around what an SRO is? So I had actually some of that concern and so by, by redeveloping, by changing it, then I think you truly are fitting what the definition of an SRO is intended. And so there, and so I think you are really, coming up with the letter now, just, you know what I'm saying. Anyway, that helped me in that regard. I think there's legitimate concern about parking availability and I'm glad that you still have the same, almost the same number of units, yet you've allowed for more parking. The other plus is, is you drive on Tappo Street, visually, the senior center development is actually quite attractive from the front. And so by now having that as a parking structure, you've allowed visually that, that street to remain just a very attractive front there. And so there's just a variety of advantages with this MOU. And so I'm, I am hopeful that this can go forward and that both parties feel comfortable that it is a positive development for both. And so I thank you for making this discussion happen right before our meeting today. Those are my comments.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I make a couple of comments?
Yeah.
Thank you. I want to thank the developer for bringing this, for bringing the city into the leadership position of having the first SRO, hopefully in Ventura County, of, you know, putting us on the map for, you know, being friendly to millennials, to those families who want their adult children out of their households, which I keep hearing over and over again, and even for seniors who are looking for a small place to call their own because there are seniors as well who say, I just want a little place of my own and I, you know, I don't mind, you know, who I live with, I just want a little place of mine, a little studio. So this meets the needs of a wide variety of our residents and it is a dire need that we have in this community. We really need to maintain the youth who contribute to the community, our young adults, but as well as those who want to downsize from their large homes, who wouldn't otherwise be able to afford to. Downsized to a townhome that is, you know, maybe $100,000 less than what their home is worth and they still owe on the mortgage. So this meets a huge need. In terms of the traffic impact, you know, this, this is something that we need to think about as a larger community and I thank you for doing this, for bringing this to the city, for thinking about the larger needs of the city as a whole, which is our job as elected officials. So I'm glad that you brought that up. Our job is to think of the entire city and the needs of all the residents in the city, which includes those, as mentioned by one of the speakers, those young adults or those people who are just looking for, you know, an affordable place to live. And these are not affordable units in terms of being subsidized. They're affordable because of the size and because of the market rate is going to be lower than it would be for a regular apartment. And so there are people that are willing to pay less because that's what they can afford to live in a smaller unit. And so I thank you for bringing this forward and for helping to put us on the cutting edge and the leadership position in Ventura County. I think this is going to be a model and this helps our local businesses as well. And everywhere that I've seen mixed-use developments like this, the businesses in the adjoining areas that are not just below but adjoining have all benefited from it as well as the environment because you have people that don't feel the need to be in a car. They can go downstairs to the coffee shop, they can walk across the street to the restaurant, they can walk across the street to the gym, they can take the bus and they don't feel the need to have a vehicle because you have mixed-use developments such as this. So I want to thank you for promoting health and the environment, reducing our carbon footprint and by, you know, thinking of the needs of the entire community, I really want to thank you genuinely for... you genuinely for that. Thank you.
Just a quick comment or two. Sorry.
Oh, thank you.
I know, it'll be quick. I just wanted to say, I'm very happy that the HOA's representative, along with the developer, worked something out. Not all of our developers are willing to compromise, so thank you very much for that, especially in what we have coming up in the future. Ms. Albron, I do agree with you, being poor is not bad. I lived in subsidized housing when I got divorced 30 years ago, couldn't afford anything else. So it, it's, there's a need for it, and I was a single working mom. So there is a need for it, no matter what we do, and this type of, it's not necessarily subsidized, but it's affordable. So it would allow somebody like I was, a single working mom, working at a bank, I would have been able to afford something like this at that point in time. And I also would like to see in comment, is there a way we can get this through as quickly as possible for the applicant? It has been a long delay. Delays cost money, I know, for both. I think it will also be beneficial for the HOA. If this gets started and gets done, then they'll be able to have construction over quicker and be able to possibly use the coffee shop if there's going to be one there. Everyone keeps saying that, so I'm hoping to get a coffee shop there. So those are my comments.
I have just one comment. I just wanted to thank the developer for working with the appellate and coming to an agreement, the MOU. I'm looking forward to seeing what it says after it's all said and done. I did want to point out a fact, though, that while this is a, is a need in our community right now, the fact that believing that people aren't going to drive cars to and from their places where they live and where they work is a fantasy. I don't care how you put it out there, I don't care how joyous you think it is. Our bus system does not design to take people anywhere except up and down our main streets and maybe to the train station. The train station we have here is not a commuter train. It's not like a subway in New York where you jump on it and go to the next stop. It takes you to Chatsworth. Then you've got to figure out where to go from there. It's not an easy thing to do. It's not impossible, but it's not easy. Our public transit system is not set up yet to where people don't have to have cars. We live in a bedroom community where people still, 80% of them, up to 85% of them, still live outside, work here, I mean, live here and work outside of our city. So this whole thing about not having cars, right now, it's a nice idea, but it's still a fantasy. But I'm looking forward to seeing what you guys come up with.
My comments are, I'd like to make a motion to continue this public hearing to either March 9th or April 6th, choice of the applicant.
Second? Oh, sorry. Are you done?
Okay. Applicant, March 9th.
My daughter's birthday is March 10th.
Mine's March 9th, but I'll be here.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday. Have a cookie on the Girl Scouts.
We'll take it earlier. We don't care if he's here.
March 9th. Okay. Motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Can I just understand what, by, by continuing this hearing, what happens on March 9th? Just so I understand. Will, can, will this be resolved at?
Let me add some legal on that, too. The idea, and I've talked a little to Steph while, while some of the comments were going on, is that you would have new conditions based on the MOU. You'd have the old set in case something happens, and you have the new set based on the agreement, voluntary agreement of the parties. And then you could, if everything goes well, you could approve that, that new agreement and conditions.
And there'll be new exhibits that would depict the parking lot as its new design would be for the council to, to see and approve.
And if it doesn't, then if, if for whatever reason the MOU does not go through, then we would be hearing it as it is again?
You would be hearing it as it is again. You could continue it again if you wanted to, yes.
Okay, thank you.
But this, by doing it this way, it doesn't have to go back to the planning commission?
That's correct.
And that, that is an effort to save time.
And it could be final if all...
Yeah, if we, we approve it on March 9th, then it's final. And that also keeps us from doing what I don't think we should do, and that is try designing their project up here on the dais. That isn't our, really our job. So they can go back, work with planning, whose job it is, and then bring it back to us, and we should be able to complete it then, depending on what's brought to us. So we have a motion and a second?
We already voted.
We voted? Oh.
Motion passed.
I voted. I did vote, I just didn't, I thought we got interrupted in the process.
Mr. Mayor, since this is continued date specific to March 9th, we're not going to be sending out a new public hearing notice or mailing. It'll be just being brought straight back to the city council.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Thank you to the attorneys and to the applicant.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next item on the agenda is item 5. This is a time for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and information reports. Speakers will be called in the order in which your car was submitted. Speakers have three minutes to speak. When the yellow light comes on, speakers have 30 seconds to conclude their comments. City council members cannot respond to your questions during this time, however, may offer response to the extent possible under Agenda Item 5A.
Couple comments before we start. How many do we have? Eleven. Okay. FYI, I will ask you to state your name, and also, if you choose, very carefully here, if you choose to give your residence location, Simi Valley, Thousand Oaks, whatever, we would certainly appreciate that information. You are not required to provide that information. And first speaker.
Scott Fitzgerald.
I'm here to speak in regards to the June 2nd incident that I had at the Simi Valley Town Center. I did come in here August 20-something, I believe it was, and I did speak to you guys about the situation I had and about the chest cam situation, and I want to thank you guys for taking care of the situation with the chest cams. It's going to protect our police department, our community, any potential victims. My situation, I'm here now to speak for, is there was an internal affairs investigation that was being done. I've got a letter saying there was no wrongdoing. I had spoke to Brian, and I asked him, I wanted an outside internal affairs investigation to be done, because the internal affairs sergeant is a biased internal affairs sergeant due to the fact that three years ago, when my wife got punched in the face by a neighbor, and it was on video, and that internal affairs sergeant watched it and said that pretty much there wasn't a wrongdoing. Officer Perkel that came out said that my wife deserved it because she was running her mouth. No female or male deserves to be hit by anybody, and when you call the law enforcement agency and they come out there and they tell you that you shouldn't have been running your mouth and let her go on, my wife is still upset and disturbed to this day. I want my internal investigation to be done by an outside law enforcement agency, because the two investigations that were done, neither one of them have been done correctly. You know, it's hard for my 14-year-old son to get an apology from the chief of police. The chief of police is doing his job correctly. Brian is doing his job correctly. Couple of the officers are not doing their job correctly. My son is 14-years-old and says, Dad, to this day still, and this just happened in August of last year, Dad, the chief of police apologized to, to me, you know, to my son, stating that if the officer would have been doing his job correctly, the chief wouldn't have to be apologizing, okay? I understand that an internal affairs investigation is done. I don't want to know what happened to the officer. What I want done is I want an outside law enforcement agency to do these internal affairs investigations, period. Do I need to bring the one back up when my wife got hit in the face? Because I don't think none of you guys would like it if your male or female wife or husband, either one of them, got backhanded in the face and you called the police that are supposed to be there to protect you and do not protect you because they say you were running your mouth. That's all I've got to say. I'm a resident here in Simi Valley.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Zachary Jacob.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable city council members. My name is Zachary Shumky, and tonight, as a resident of Simi Valley for 22 years, I come before you to ask that you investigate a resolution to make Simi Valley a Second Amendment sanctuary city. Before I get into exactly what I mean by that and what I'm asking of you, I want to lay a bit of foundation as to why I'm making this correct, this request. 250 years ago, a non-governmental colonial militia stood Lexington and Concord and pushed back an organized government military. What followed was revolution, and then the construction of a new government, wherein the founders sought to guarantee that should the same circumstances arise, the same course of action would be guaranteed. One of the protections put in place for this goal is the right of the people to keep and bear arms. This was affirmed by the U.S. Supreme Court in the year 2008 in the, in the case DC versus Heller. It explicitly ruled that the individual people have a right to keep and bear arms independent of any affiliation with a military organization. Despite this, the state of, the state of California has continued to put in place laws that burden the law-abiding citizen instead of the criminals. One possible solution to this problem is that this, as a city, we direct our police to not enforce laws that we can show trivially, trivially violate our constitutional rights. This is, proposal is often known as a sanctuary city status, because it protects people of Simi Valley from certain laws in defense of higher laws. One such resolution was passed last year in the city of Needles, California, with the support of the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department. Since then, and before then as well, similar resolutions have been passed across the country in states, counties, municipalities, and cities, as government overreach becomes as ignorable as it is permissible, which is to say, not at all. I ask that you investigate such a resolution, both through your own research and by contacting the city attorney, Ventura County Sheriff's Department, the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department, the city of Needles, as well as other firearm rights organizations that I included in the packet of information that I handed before the start of the meeting tonight. I ask that you do all of this, you perform your investigation, and then you come before, or then you set a date in the future where we can again meet and discuss what your findings have been. I'm available for questions if you would like. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jorge Garcia.
Good evening, Excellency, council members. I want to speak about something that is not on the agenda, but somehow always comes up in the meetings, the pioneers. And as a personal disclosure, I want to say my, my three offspring attended and graduated from Royal High School, and I spent seven years as the vice president of the Royal Highland Brigade Boosters. But having said that, I want to talk about these, these pioneers. We have pioneer days. We have, one of the high schools are, you know, the mascot is pioneers, and who are these pioneers that we celebrate? Well, I think if we look at the pioneer period, what we're referring to is probably the period from 1848 till probably around World War I. As, you know, families who came here, people who immigrated, they, they tend to see themselves as pioneers. But when we have that image of pioneer, I don't think we're thinking about, for example, the beet growers that were here in Simi that helped make Oxnard, you know, the, the sugar capital that it was for a long time. For that matter, the pioneer farmers who grew lima beans and helped Ventura County become number-one producer in the world of lima beans at one point. I think we're really talking about the cattle industry. People were drawn in by the gold, and most people couldn't even make a living doing that, so they, instead of going back home, they started looking for other ways to make a living. And one of the things that they saw was large-scale cattle. That's not something that they brought with them. I mean, you can talk about Yankee ingenuity all day long and into the night, growing and producing large-scale cattle operations was not part of Yankee ingenuity. It's something, well, they had the ingenuity to see it and jump on the opportunity, but they took over a tradition that had been brought in. And this is where it's interesting, our pioneer traditions go back east, but they hook in very quickly to something that goes south and then across the ocean, because this is something people say, well, it's the Spanish. Well, it happened in the Spanish, the 300 years of the Spanish period, but those weren't Spaniards, because when they started bringing the animals with them, you know, a two-to-three month voyage by ship is problematic if you want to bring your horses with you, and that's what they had to do. But they then began production here, and it was done by native people, actually native people taught by large-scale cattle growers and horse growers who were from North Africa. So there's a transmission of technology, tools, and technique that then we graft into the pioneer economy here. And so when we talk about pioneers, okay, it's not the beet growers, it's the vaqueros who were native people.
Thank you.
Jan Smith? Jan Smith?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city staff. It's my pleasure to be here tonight, and what I'd like to speak on is the possible change of the boundaries of neighborhood councils. My comments that I'm going to make this evening are strictly mine. They do not represent anyone else, they can speak for themselves. The first thing that I'd like to tell you is, I'm happily serving my third term on Neighborhood Council 2. I am also the current chairperson. The first request I'd like to make of you all is that possibly you could have this agendized and bring it to all four neighborhood councils, to make sure that we all are able to present our opinions on these possible boundary changes. My district right now, Neighborhood 2, borders First Street and Sycamore. We go north to south. I really like the looks of that. It's a wide variety of people, it's a wide variety of businesses, it's something that I think, looking at the new proposed city council districts, I would be reporting to one council member. This way, if we keep it as it currently is, running north to south, First to Sycamore, we would have at least one or two council members that would be able to hear what our residents have to say. So that's my first thought. I kind of looked at option 2. That's basically kind of keeping the boundaries the same, but from what I've learned, 3 has more applicants, Neighborhood Council 3 has more applicants than Neighborhood Council 4. So maybe some sort of, little bit change in their boundaries would work. But please, if you can, agendize this item to all the four neighborhood councils, and if you can, keep it as it is. Thank you for letting me speak this evening, I appreciate it.
Thank you. And where do you live?
Well, I'm in Neighborhood Council 2. I live between First Street and Sycamore.
I, I, I trust that's in Simi Valley.
It is, absolutely. Wouldn't live anywhere else.
Thank you.
Gary King?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name's Gary King. As many of you know, I'm a 40-year resident of Simi. I've been engaged in various activities and boards in support of our city. I'm currently serving as commissioner of the Citizen Selection Advisory Commission and an executive board member of Neighborhood Council 1, formerly served on Neighborhood Council 3 as well. But today, I'm not speaking on behalf of those organizations, I'm speaking on my behalf. And I'm, in regards to Agenda Item 8B, like Jan was talking about, the Neighborhood Council boundaries, I have a different view than Jan. I'm strongly in favor of option 3, to modify the boundaries of the Neighborhood Councils to be con- Councils to be consistent with the new district map for the City Council, for the following reasons. I think it would prevent confusion between the Neighborhood Councils and City Council districts. If a neighbor out there wants to figure out what district they're in, first they have to think, is it the Neighborhood Council district, or is it the City Council district? And that could get very confusing, and I think there should be consistency. Also, the City Council districts were selected to balance our population distribution, so that balance has already been done for us. And I think it'd be a good thing for the City Council members, as they'll be able to easily assess the needs and concerns of their districts by monitoring the Neighborhood Council reports for those districts. I suggest that the City Council opt to not solicit input from the Neighborhood Councils, as that would delay the process, and in my opinion, Option Three is the best choice. In addition, since I'm up here, I think the Neighborhood Councils are an extremely important part of our community, and I'd like the staff to perform a detailed review of the overall Neighborhood Council program. I think it's a good time to do that now, as we're making these changes. I believe there are opportunities to improve the program and bring it up to date with the many changes that have occurred in our city since the program was first initiated. I think there's significant opportunities for streamlining and cost savings that could help with our budget concerns. I've already submitted a draft proposal of some changes to City Staff, and I volunteered my time to help. In summary, I'm strongly in favor of Option Three, to modify the boundaries of the councils to be consistent with the new district map, and I encourage council and staff to review and update the Neighborhood Council program, to bring it up to date, and look at opportunities for streamlining and cost savings. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Judy Bruce.
Hello, I'm Judy Bruce, Simi Valley resident. I'm not here to talk about the dangers of 5G, et cetera, and it's good that you're considering fiber optics. It's a no-brainer that it's better in many, many ways than the kill grid of 4G, 5G, small cells. My comment tonight has to do with the fact that Internet connectivity is part of a much bigger issue. I warned the City Council about it years ago in a public comment relating to so-called "smart cities." I will send you my YouTube, and I called it "Exposing Sustainable Development." This bigger issue is called the United Nations Agenda 21, which has now been expanded to UN Agenda 2030, a blueprint for globalist government. There are seventeen euphemistic-sounding goals, four of which I'll cover. Ensure availability and management of water. Sounds great. Truth. Allow powerful corporations to seize control of our water supplies. It'll be water rationing. Ensure access to affordable, reliable energy. Really means penalize gas and oil while pushing doomed-to-fail "green," quote, "green" energy, which under a smart grid surveillance. Take urgent action to combat climate change. Means set energy quotas on each person and punish those that exceed the limits. It means energy rationing. Make cities and human settlements sustainable. It is about moving the population into a closely surveilled stack-and-pack and clearing out of rural areas. They're basically prison-like cities. So what are smart cities really about? And I know most people think it just sounds so great, but we have been sold a bill, have you been sold a bill of goods by the government? And how did I know to opt out of the smart meter? Technocracy is ruling by technology. It's a science of social engineering. It is inventory and control plan facilitated by smart cities. It's a buzzword for prison cities. They will inventory all land, water, minerals, plants, all animals, all construction, all food, all energy, all information, all human beings in the world. It is not about saving energy or recycling. All systems will be standardized so that they can be controlled centrally by a globalized government. This includes water, energy, law enforcement, and education. Technocracy rules by regulation, not by the rule of law. We need to stop regionalization, as it is a stepping stone to globalization. And regional governments are replacing sovereign entities. Its purpose is to destroy representative government, to be replaced with unelected, unaccountable technocrats, like the head of your SCAG. My hope is that this comment will help you connect the dots, how smart cities are nothing more than a facilitator of a surveillance state whose purpose is control.
Thank you.
By being informed, please find ways to protect our city and its privacy, even if it means refusing grants, since you know.
Your time is up, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Keith Kelly.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Keith Kelly, and I've been a resident of Simi Valley since 1977, and I'm also currently a member of the Executive Board of Neighborhood Council Number Three. And my understanding is that the function of the Neighborhood Councils is to be an advisor and provide information on, basically, the sentiment of our neighborhoods to the council. And since the city has been coerced into representation by district, now it seems that the best way that Neighborhood Councils can function, in my opinion, is to align ourselves with each individual council member so that we can provide that member with information about their direct constituency and their attitudes and sentiments. And so I therefore recommend that we go with Option Number Three. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Schwimmer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council Members. My name is Gary Schwimmer. I'm a resident of Simi Valley, been here since 1987. Tonight, I'd like to talk about Item 8A and 8B. The council discussed the proposal of smart city implementation during their annual budget review presentation of 5/23/2019. In June of 2019, I spoke at a City Council meeting, voicing some questions and concerns regarding the lack of funding and a plan for this effort in the FY '20 budget, to which I never did receive an answer. I have attached my speaking notes from that meeting and will submit them to you this evening. In the past year, the City Council has discussed the implementation of 5G in the city of Simi Valley. The council heard from numerous citizens about the lack of investigations for health and safety. One of the alternative solutions many citizens presented was the use of fiber optic cabling to provide high-speed networking capabilities which would mitigate the potential of any health hazard. However, I have another concern that's been raised tonight with this document that's going forward, it's regarding the fiber implementation, which is that we know that the 5G implementation in residential areas requires that fiber be available at the 5G small cell sites to communicate via fiber to go upstream to the hub. This fiber connection is what provides the high-speed communication uplink, otherwise 5G throttles down to 4G. What I am concerned is that the city wants to implement this fiber cabling only to support the wireless companies to implement their 5G plans. If I am correct, then the City Council is doing a disservice to the residents of Simi Valley by not being transparent with your decisions. I hope I am wrong, and I'm just, you know, misreading things. Regarding the Neighborhood Councils, they should be aligned with the new district boundaries of the City Council members. The reasons for this are, one, the City Council members must be aligned with the community they represent to understand the issues that the people they represent are facing. Two, the City Council member will be able to report directly to the councils of citizens that they directly represent to explain city issues and actions and the impact to their specific district. Since each City Council member will be elected only by the district they will represent, the Neighborhood Council should be exactly aligned with the boundaries that can vote for each City Council member. Based on the memorandum from the Department of Environmental Services dated February 24th, 2020, the only option that I see as viable is Option Three. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pam Campo.
My name is Pam Campo, and my comments are regarding the proposed changes to the Neighborhood Council district boundaries. I'm an Executive Board Member on Neighborhood Council II and a resident for 47 years, and my comments are strictly my personal comments. The forced change of becoming districts also forces the city to transition to district elections. This, of course, is a big change to council representation within our city. Therefore, keeping the Neighborhood Councils within the same boundaries of the districts maintains the continuity between residents and the city representatives. I support Option Two. And Option Two, changing the boundaries to more evenly distribute the population, gives appropriate representation in Neighborhood Councils Three and Four. This gives more opportunity for residents to apply as Executive Board Members in NC Four. I feel the more opportunity for people to gain additional seats is an opportunity for a larger representation of their district. I would also like to suggest that the consideration of the proposed changes to the Neighborhood Council district boundaries be added to Neighborhood Council agendas for input before your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rebecca Alberon.
I have to not to speak, but I support Option Number Three.
Option Three?
Three. Yeah, three, to align the Neighborhood Councils with the districts, yeah.
Michelle LaPointe.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm unintentionally contributing to a theme tonight, which is to ask that something be put on a future agenda. I've had cause to consult the city's conflict of interest policy on a number of occasions. It's on the website, a fact that very few people know, including a lot of city employees don't know it's on the City Council's website, but it is. And I have questions. I've tried to get them answered through the city attorney's office. The person I spoke with tried to be helpful, but since he was unfamiliar with the document, he could only make assumptions. I know that the document meets the minimum standards as required by law, because it says so on the top of it, but other than that, it's incredibly vague. For example, some of the roles listed on the document as subject to the conflict of interest policy rules are crossed out. The assumption is that the people with those roles now have different titles, or that those roles have been eliminated, but it's not clear, and I think it should be. The other problem with the policy is that it's incredibly vague. As near as I can tell, in practice, adhering to the conflict of interest policy is on the honor system. If someone asks if you think it's a conflict of interest and you're the party involved, you say, "Oh, I don't think so," and we're all okay. There are few guidelines about what is or isn't a conflict. This has practical as well as theoretical problems. For example, if a citizen is a member of a city board and they volunteer their skills to a project, that would seem like it's clearly not a conflict of interest. But what if that person needs funds to pay for part of the project, or is it okay if they do it at cost? Is it okay if they do it at a modest profit but a discount? Is it okay if it's not at cost, but doing that work takes revenue away from a business in the city? Is there some point at which, maybe a monetary point, at which a project should be given up to existing city resources that the city already pays for, like an in-house person or a business? You don't want to take money away from a business in the city. At what point should projects be put out to competitive bids? I was told that there are no existing guidelines for answering these questions, but that anyone in that position should be very careful of exposure to the appearance or fact of conflict of interest. Lovely catch 22 to find yourself in. In other words, we can't tell you precisely what the rules are, but you could be in moral trouble, ethical trouble, legal trouble if you violate them. There are other unanswered questions, ranging from whether the Arts Foundation can offer the same benefits packages to city employees as other donors, to what happens when family associates, business interests, political donors overlap. I think that a clear and transparent conflict of interest policy would benefit everyone, and that it would be better if we resolved these issues before there's a problem than afterwards. So I request that the City Council put discussion of a more robust and clear conflict of interest policy on the agenda at a future meeting, and thank you for allowing me to go a minute over.
Thank you.
Rain Wiseman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Rain Wiseman. I've been a resident of Simi Valley for 33 years, and I am the Secretary of the Neighborhood Council Number Four, speaking for myself tonight. As far as changing the boundaries, I prefer Option Three. I feel it will cause less confusion for the citizens of Simi Valley, and I feel confident in the barriers and the redistribution that we've already done. So I feel that that's good local representation, and I think that that will best allow us to get somebody that knows our area, our people, and I think that's best. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no more speaker cards. We do have four speaker cards that do not wish to speak. Two were in support of Option Two for this item, and the other two, they just stated to let the Neighborhood Council decide.
Okay. Prior to going to district comments, I have a question for our city attorney. One of the speakers, Judy Bruce, doesn't she have lawsuits against the council?
Yes, without commenting on the specifics of litigation, yes.
Okay, so every time I've been around attorneys, which is often, they say that if you're in litigation, do not speak about that thing. So I'm just asking you if that's something that we should be aware of.
My advice is that the City Council not discuss in open session the lawsuit that we have. So that would be my advice. It's on 5G.
Okay. Just for the record, so everybody knows that. Okay, any comments regarding the public statements?
Yes, Mayor, if I may. With regard to the comment from Scott Fitzgerald, I hope I pronounced your name correctly. I just want to let you know, and I'm not sure, I'm going to ask Mr. Gaver, what is the procedure, what is the process for, you know, I'm sure there's an appeal, right? After you have an Internal Affairs investigation, there's another process?
I don't know if there's another process, but I think the response would be, I think, between the chief can provide a, come on down, chief. The chief could probably provide an explanation and a memo to your boxes, but so I'll see standing. We'll give him some exercise.
Exactly. I need it, I need it. Yeah, whatever questions you have on the process, I can answer. Normally, what happens is there is an Internal Affairs investigation that looks at department policy and whether those department policies were violated or not, and when the investigation is done, the specific outcomes of those investigations are not, by law, shared with the people that make them, other than, you know, whether the allegations are sustained or not sustained. A letter gets sent to the individual explaining the process of the investigation, and then at that point, the investigation is concluded. Normally, by nature of an internal investigation, outside agencies won't take them. We've had cases before where they're sensitive in nature, and we'll sometimes go to the district attorney's office, or we'll go to another agency when there's, like, maybe, like, if you had a crash involving an officer in a non-duty capacity, we might have the CHP look at it. But generally speaking, you know, the investigation is completed, and that's where it ends. The option that the citizen would have at that point is they could file a lawsuit, or they could file a claim, and, you know, state allegation. they could file a claim, and, you know, state allegations of wrongdoing or something that they may have disagreed with, and then at that point, it can be reviewed in court. But pretty much with the internal investigation, they are not reviewed by outside agencies unless there is something that, like a conflict or something of that nature.
Okay, so we've never had outside?
We have.
Oh, we have had?
Yeah, we have had them when there's a situation that comes up that's a conflict, like, for instance, in a situation where, like, I could think of, like, you know, a car accident. If an officer's involved in a car accident and there's injuries, they'd bring the CHP in to do the accident investigation. Whenever there's an officer-involved shooting, the district attorney does a criminal investigation, but then that investigation comes back to the department to do the administrative part of it. So it's an administrative function, and it's generally not handled outside of the department, unless there is, like I said, stated conflict of interest or something of that nature. So we have had them handled by the outside before, but again, it's something specific to a conflict of interest, and then we have to get the agreement for the outside agency to take it. There's been a couple cases recently where I've asked the district attorney to look into cases, and they've just said, "We're not going to do it. That's not our purview to do it. It's an internal matter." So it just really depends on the situation.
Okay, so that one?
Let me just, I got to.
I'm just speaking very generally. Yeah, it was just a general process.
Well, hold on. Let me just say what I need to say, which is probably more discussion of this would have to be agendized, this particular process.
Yeah, I just want it in general.
Okay, I agree. If we're going to go this far on, these rebuttals are usually one, two sentences, so we need to agendize it. That's something else.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
The only thing I was going to say, doesn't, the item on Neighborhood Councils is scheduled to go to the Neighborhood Councils, correct? After we accept just the state, the report?
That would be the council's decision, if you want to send it to them.
Okay, I thought it said it was going to, so that's our decision tonight.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next item, consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item six, the consent calendar, and there's one resolution for your consideration as follows. Resolution number 2020-08, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley approving amendments to the Affordable Housing Agreement Rental (AHAR59) and Loan Agreement, including the promissory note and deed of trust for Simi Vintage Sycamore 650 LP to rectify the address and legal description of the project site. Staff is available for questions.
Mayor, I'd like to pull consent item number four.
Okay. Pull four.
I'd like to just quick question, number three, please.
Number what?
Number three.
Number three. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to move the rest of the consent items for approval.
Second.
Call for the vote. Okay, your question on number?
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, question on number three?
This is just a question with regards, I mean, the report was excellent, was fine. I noticed that in the letter we received from Mr. Bauermeister, it referenced fees, permits, project-related costs of anywhere from one hundred and seventy-five thousand to two hundred thousand dollars. Are those fees that we are, that the city is assessing for billing, planning permits, you know, et cetera? I guess I'm wondering if we need to be, since we are gifting, since we are using our grant funds to support this project, whether those fees are also, we need to be looking at them a little closer so that possibly, if there are fees, we possibly might consider waiving them, but I don't know the nature of those fees.
Yeah, well, quite frankly, neither do we. We'd have to, we'd have to get an explanation from the Free Clinic on how they came up with that estimate, what those fees are. I don't think we've given them an estimate on what the fees are for their project, and it does seem a little bit high for what they're doing, so it may not be all our agency.
We've contributed plenty of money to do, to pay for all construction costs, which would include fees. Is that the question?
Well, we have contributed costs to their fundraising campaign. I think what we would do in response is let us reach out to the Free Clinic, find out what their estimate includes, and then we can provide that information to the council. If you want something to come back regarding that, we can certainly bring that back.
Yeah. My thing is, is that we continually give money, and that's for all fees associated with it, I would think.
Health Department fees.
I'm sorry?
It could be.
Yeah, I'm guessing all of those fees are health department-related. We have no control over them.
Sure. I guess I just want, yeah, and maybe if we could just, maybe in Mr. Bauermeister's next report, we could understand a little bit of the nature of those fees. I just want to be sure that we're, yes, we've gifted, we've granted this money. I'd like to be sure that we're not also penalizing or adding additional fees on time.
We'll get an explanation for the council.
Excellent. Thank you, that was all.
Okay, motion for three.
A move to approve consent item number three.
Second. Call for the vote. Number four.
Motion passes unanimously.
Oops, I get ahead of myself. Question number four?
Yes, I just, relating to a comment that was made by one of our public speakers, I would just like a list of who is on the Simi Valley Days Foundation to make sure there's no conflict of interest, since we are transferring the funds for the Fourth of July fireworks event from the Simi Valley Days Foundation, I'm sorry, was the chamber of commerce that we had last year, and now we're transferring it to Simi Valley Days Foundation. I just want to make sure there's no conflict of interest. So I'd just like a list of, you know, who's on the Simi Valley Days Foundation to make sure there is no conflict.
We can provide that information.
Okay. Is it posted anywhere online, or?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so that could be made, you know, if that could be sent to us, and we would be able to publish it, publish it, yes?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm trying to understand, what kind of a conflict of interest are you?
I just want to make sure, you know, we don't have people that are on the, you know, foundation who might be vendors or possible vendors, you know, providing advertising or posters or, you know, things like that, flyers and, you know, printing, and so we have a lot of active residents who contribute their time and energy to many boards of directors in the city, which I greatly appreciate, but I just want to make sure there's no conflict of interest in terms of that kind of issue benefiting financially, you know, from funds that are received from the city.
Usually, the funding we're giving is for the fireworks only in this type of a situation. Correct?
That's correct. The idea behind our contribution is to fund the fireworks, the shooting in the air.
They match it with the Park District.
Correct. And the Simi Valley's Foundation will have a separate agreement with the recreation and park district regarding what their use of the property and everything else, too. But we can certainly provide this information to you.
Okay, thank you. Just want to add some transparency.
But let's say, for instance, there's a council member on the Simi Valley Foundation, Simi Valley Days Foundation, is that, are we questioning, is that a conflict?
Well, I should say, if any council member is on the Simi Valley Days Foundation, they should disclose that before they vote on it, just as the Police Foundation and other foundations, is the general advice. If someone's an officer, they should probably recuse themselves.
Because what I'm trying to come up with is, there's so many different foundations, and council members are on it, employees are on them, and I've never, I've always thought it was up to the foundation to uphold the conflict, and there has been conflicts, and they've been exposed, or some of them have. I can't say that they all have.
Well, the general basic rule for the council, as well as planning commission, even Neighborhood Councils, anybody who passes on one of these agreements, is that if you are a member of a 501(c)(3) or (c)(4) other charitable organization, you're supposed to disclose it, and you can still vote. If you're an officer or you get a salary, I could look at it more specifically, but probably you should recuse yourself. So that's the general, all foundations, all 501(c)(3)'s, just for everybody. I don't know if it's always been observed in the past. You know, as you go back, maybe not everybody was aware of that rule, but that is a rule that has been observed recently on the council, by the way.
Good.
And if my understanding is correct, I don't believe they have any paid members on the Simi Valley's Foundation Board.
Yeah, I don't think they do either.
I'd just like to, you know, continue having accountability, transparency in the city. I think our residents deserve that.
Okay, do we want to vote for four?
Move authorize consent item four.
A second.
Call for the vote.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, there are no items of consideration on the agenda on item seven, so we'll continue deeper. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council? Next item on the agenda is new business item eight A, consideration of an ordinance approving a smart city managed services agreement, a master encroachment permit, and a license agreement with SciFi Networks Simi Valley LLC for the construction of fiber optic network in Simi Valley. The ordinance reading is as follows. Ordinance number 1307, an ordinance of the City Council of Simi Valley approving a license agreement, smart city managed services agreement, and a master encroachment permit with SciFi Networks Simi Valley LLC for the construction of a fiber optic network in Simi Valley. Interim City Manager Gabler is here for this presentation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. For the past several years, the city has worked to expand the broadband capabilities in Simi Valley. While the city's commercial industrial areas have fiber in the streets, the city's residential areas have not been similarly served. The city's reviewed various alternatives to expand broadband in Simi Valley. To that end, staff has met with representatives of SciFi Network to install a fiber optic network in the community for use by residents, businesses, and the city. SciFi Networks is offering to privately finance, build, operate, and maintain a fiber-to-the-premise network that will pass every property and street furniture in the city and connect any location with fiber when the owner of such location requests fiber connectivity. As proposed, once SciFi builds the fiber system, they will wholesale access of the network to multiple internet service providers, who will in turn compete on the network to provide residents and businesses with internet service as well as other competitive services. Having multiple ISPs helps to ensure competition in providing services. Additionally, the ISP can compete on the suite of services offered. Residents and businesses can choose to continue to receive service from their existing ISP provider, such as Spectrum or AT&amp;T, or from one of the new competitive ISPs on the SciFi network. Over the course of the last year, the city and SciFi have developed several documents that will allow the construction of the fiber optic network. The first document is a master encroachment permit. The permit provides SciFi access to the city's, or the public right-of-way to install the fiber optic network. The fiber cable will pass every property in the city, and SciFi will connect any property with fiber when requested to do so. SciFi or its ISP provider will supply a fiber connection at no cost to each connected property. The smart city managed services agreement outlines the terms and operational conditions of a closed-loop fiber system to be provided to the city. The smart city agreement also identifies the initial service locations that will receive fiber, direct fiber connections, creating the closed-loop system with the City of Simi Valley and City Hall acting as the hub of the system. The city currently pays fifty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars annually for internet service for city facilities. The smart city agreement provides that the city will instead pay the same amount annually to SciFi for twenty years for a fiber network. Based upon the terms of the smart city agreement, the city will upgrade its internet connectivity at speeds in excess of what the city currently receives, and the city's current expenditure and the city's current expenditure level will remain the same for the next twenty years. The final document is a license agreement. As part of the fiber network, SciFi will require hubs in the city in order to support the network operations. The fiber network will connect to these hubs, which will then connect to the localized internet system. Based upon the size of the fiber network, the number of connection points, and the physical dimensions of the city limits, SciFi will need four hubs in the community. The license agreement provides that the city will make available four locations in the city, locations yet to be determined, located on city property or in city easements, for SciFi to place the hubs. The proposed permit and agreements with SciFi bring a fiber network to the Simi Valley, making Simi Valley a gigabit community. In doing so, the city will provide every resident and business the ability to have fiber access and gigabit speeds, moving the Simi Valley forward on a technological front at virtually no cost to the city. Staff recommends the City Council approve the master encroachment permit, a license agreement, and a smart city managed services agreement with SciFi Networks. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and in the back of the room, Mr. Ben Bonty-Jopson, the CEO of SciFi, is available to answer any questions that you may have regarding their particular network.
Questions?
I do have a few, if that's right. First of all, this is for Brian. I mean, this is an exciting prospect, but do we need to put this out for a competitive bid?
We did not. We were approached by SciFi, and we entered into negotiations with them. The agreements that we do have in the permit are not exclusive, so any other fiber operator could come into the community, and we would be able to negotiate the same type of agreements with them as well. In November of 2018, we invited over half a dozen ISPs to the city to meet with city staff and to discuss how they could introduce additional connectivity to the city, including installation of fiber, using microwave for internet connections, as well as other methods, although those were all good discussions, none of those other six providers stepped up to build their networks in the community.
In the document, as I understand, we are talking costing, and we continue at the fifty-one thousand dollar annually, if I understand that correctly. It also says that there will be four hundred future connection points at a cost of about thirty-five dollars a month, which is basically an additional fourteen thousand a month if we were to connect all four hundred. Is that a likelihood, a reality? I mean, that basically takes us to about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars annually if we were to do this. What are these four hundred points we're talking about?
So those other four hundred points would connect all of our water towers, pump stations, traffic signals, and additional bus stops and other locations where we could provide an internet connection to. I don't see the need to do all those immediately. We wouldn't do that. We would do it as budget would allow and as the need were to move forward. So I certainly don't see that on the near horizon, but it is available to us, I think, over a ten-year horizon.
And in that ten-year horizon, as I understand, the term that basically this can be renewed four more times, or for ten years, theoretically, it could go up to fifty years out. I understand that SciFi, they can decide whether they want to continue after ten years. Do we have that same relationship with the city can say, "This is not ideal for us"? I'm just trying to understand that ten-year renewal process, what that looks like.
The initial agreement is for ten years, in which they would have to have a ninety-five percent completed system in the community. If they were not billed out to ninety-five percent after ten years, the city could not allow any more installations, and they would just continue to manage what they have. The city's agreement, in terms of paying the fifty-one thousand dollars for internet connectivity, we are not bound to that. We could, if it just wasn't working, or we get a better deal, we could certainly terminate that part of the agreement.
Okay, thank you. And can I ask, Mr. Gary Sherman brought up something in his conversation that I, that I was, was a point that I hadn't really thought about. Is he accurate in that this is a precursor or necessary, something that would allow 5G connection? I mean, in my mind, this was actually replaced, so it wasn't necessary. I'm just trying to understand that relationship.
Why don't we bring the, I'm sorry.
Well, I think I, yeah, so the fiber will run in, we have, we have three hundred and thirty miles approximately of city streets. The fiber will run in all of those city streets. The intent is
The intent is for the ISPs that are connected to the fiber network to provide internet service to residents, businesses, and the city, and city street furniture that we would have out there. I don't know if it is in their business plan to provide fiber connectivity to telephone poles or any 5G providers that are out there. That certainly isn't the intent of our network. I guess it is certainly possible that you could run a, once you have fiber there, you could do that. But that being said, there is fiber in the streets today. It just doesn't exist in the residential areas. Although, I will say, the Cenesis provides fiber for the school district system, which does run in residential areas. So, I mean, you could conceivably run a 5G antenna in a residential area under the current circumstances because there is fiber in some residential areas if it's near a school.
And if I can address one thing raised by Councilmember Litzter, the encroachment permit is the right to be in the street, and that is sort of their right. And let's say the agreement, the smart city for some reason terminates, they can use that for each 10-year period or not, and so that will continue, but it doesn't technically cost the city anything, and they have to move their equipment if other people or the city needs to move it. The smart city agreement allows the city, either party, to terminate upon 330 days, so almost a year's of notice. So once that starts, we could get out without penalty. If for some reason it wasn't working, you have to give like a year's notice or 330 days. So I just want to clarify that.
Okay. Thank you. And I just wanted to understand, on page, last question, thank you. On page 132, it talks about drop location, and you mentioned that there are four hubs that are needed. Is that where the structures are anticipated to be placed, or is that still to be determined?
The drop locations are those addresses that are below, that will be providing the connectivity for the cities, city buildings.
So those are not the four hubs that you're referencing?
No, they are not. The four hubs are included in the license agreement.
Gotcha, okay, thank you. Thank you. I think that's it for my questions right now. Thank you.
If I may ask a few questions, thank you. Where else has SciFi done this? Have they set up fiber optic anywhere else? What other cities have they done in?
I don't believe, Ben, you haven't started construction in any other cities yet, is that correct?
We have, yes.
Yes, please.
Evening, Mayor, council members. Ben Bonty-Jobson from SciFi Networks. Yeah, very happy to be here, and thank you to Brian and your team for all the work putting these agreements together. To answer your question, yes, we have started construction on our first network here, which is Fullerton, California, down in Orange County, if you're familiar with that, a city similar in size to Simi Valley. We're due to light our first customers there in a couple of months, and yeah, the program's yet going well through there at the moment. We've just had an agreement, actually with the bordering town of Placentia, so that's likely to be next, as well as we sort of expand out through that area. And there'll be other announcements for other cities across the U.S. in the coming months as well.
And how old is your company, if I may ask?
We are coming up to seven years. Seven years, yeah.
I'm sorry, another question. Where are you based out of?
So, based out of Los Angeles. We also have offices in London and New Jersey.
I just wanted to get a feel for the company.
My accent throws people off.
No, no. I can tell you're from the Jersey.
I'm not from Texas.
Okay, and I don't know if this is a question for you or for Mr. Gable, but, you know, when I saw that it says, "When SciFi builds a fiber system," this is on page two, "they will wholesale access of the network to multiple ISPs, to multiple internet service providers." So it won't be exclusive, so people will not be locked in. Like, that's one of the things, complaints people have about cable, like they can only get Time Warner cable, and they can't get, you know, Spectrum or something else. They could choose the ISP, they would be competitive?
Yeah, that's one of the biggest differentiators about our business model in the U.S. is that, you know, the network down in Fullerton, for instance, is the largest privately funded open access network in the country. So, right now, there are two ISPs in that market that are competing for the services of the residential and business customers. So they have, you know, different pricing structures, different types of product offerings, that are still using the best-in-class infrastructure. And that's where we come in, so we build the best-in-class infrastructure and operate it independently. So whether you have one ISP on day one, or two, or three, the important thing is that, you know, you've got that longstanding ability to have multiple other service providers come in at any one stage in time, at any different stage in time. So if services aren't being upheld to a good standard, you know, interventions can be had.
Okay, and how does that work? Do you guys recruit ISPs, or they found out, "Hey, there's fiber optic in Simi Valley, let's go to Simi Valley now"? Or how does that work?
Yeah, I mean, we take a lot of risk in the investments that we make, but we don't take that much risk. We do have agreements in place with ISPs before we start construction. So we haven't identified exactly the ISPs that will come to Simi Valley at this stage. We have ISPs that we work with at the moment that are fantastic, and, you know, we really look for ones that are very customer service focused and also, you know, like to really root themselves within a community. So the two down in Fullerton, yet they may well come here, they may not, but there are other service providers that are well qualified as well and open to working on these types of networks.
Okay, the competition is really important because the more competition there is, the better, you know, service we get for residents, as you said, so I just wanted to clarify that. The other question I have, and I don't know who can answer this question, is, you know, as cities like ours, you know, are having more infill development, you were here earlier in the meeting, so you saw that we're having, you know, denser housing built. Can the fiber optic network handle, you know, higher density, you know, with more users? Or is there a need, is there going to be a need in the future for an upgrade, like in five years or 10 years? Or can it handle, you know, higher density, more users?
Yeah, so, I mean, if the city suddenly doubled in size over a period of 10 years, then we probably have some issues. But we do build in a lot of excess capacity. So, yeah, accommodating a new development like that, or 10 times that across the city really wouldn't be a problem for the capacity of the network. The fiber footprint itself that we build is designed to cope with all the possible parcels in the city today, plus, as was discussed, the smart city demand points as well. So, yeah, there's plenty of capacity there from a fiber footprint, and then really it's about how you manage that across your network architecture.
Okay, and this is another question, I don't know who it's for, but I'm concerned about the unincorporated areas. You know, we do have unincorporated areas of the city, like, you know, we have these random parcels throughout the city that we have not incorporated into the city yet, so I'm not sure who this is a question for. If we're gonna, if those 330 miles that you mentioned, does that include those unincorporated areas or not?
We will have them include the islands, although they would not be going into, for instance, the Cenesis out of Knowles or into that area. But the seven islands that we have in the city, they would be running their fiber in those seven islands.
Okay, would there be a possibility for the Knowles to connect to that in the future?
Well, it's outside of our jurisdiction. They would have to reach out to the county of Ventura.
Yeah, I'd need to check the area that you're specifically mentioning, but I know we've identified several addresses that do fall outside, as you say, the current boundaries of, the legal boundaries of the city, the incorporated areas.
If I can ask the city manager, for the islands, do we have the easements on the streets for the islands, the street portions inside those islands? Because if we don't, then we, the encroachment permit would not cover.
Well, good point, no, we don't.
Have to go through county, I believe.
So we'd have to go back, you'd have to go back to the county.
Yeah, so to the extent we can build there, we can design it in today. To the extent we have the permissions, we're designing all of that in today, and there's a lot of excess capacity as well, but, yeah, the more we can identify on day one, the better we can architect the network to ensure that we can serve those in the future.
If the county would follow the lead of this permit, provided the council proves it, then that would provide them a template to do the same thing, if they would do that.
And if things go as planned, those islands could be part of the city within the next year or two.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to give the provider, you know, this used to be three cities, and then it became Simi Valley. So, you know, that's why we have all these unincorporated islands, but I know, you know, there's a large number of people that want to be a part of this wave of the future, so...
Well, we're in the design stage now, so it's good timing to get all that data and as much foresight as possible, especially in terms of the city's growth plans as well and new developments that are arising. So the more that we can build in and understand that today, the better.
Okay. The other questions I think I have are for Brian, I believe. I hope so. On page four, it says, "A smart city agreement will provide a closed-loop fiber system for the following locations: City Hall, Public Services Center." Is that where our sanitation is?
Yes.
Okay. Police shooting range, Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center, Simi Valley Police Building. I'm not sure if it's included or not. Does City Hall include the library and the senior center?
Yes, because it would just come to City Hall, and then we have a fiber connection between here and the senior center and the library, so they don't need a separate fiber connection.
Okay, I just wanted, and the reason I'm bringing that up is because when we have had, you know, power shutdowns, when we, I mean, a lot of people rely on the library, it would really make our library state-of-the-art, it would make our senior center state-of-the-art to have fiber optic access, and because of the load, you know, the overcapacity load that it can take, especially when we have, you know, emergencies where people are looking for information, everything is online, everything is, you know, a next will push out on your text message, or, you know, the phone number is online. It's really important for our public safety as a city to have access to the internet. And the, so I just wanted to make sure of that. The public Wi-Fi that I see mentioned on page five, and I know that's in the future, right? And the secured first responder Wi-Fi, is that included, or is that in the future? Is that part of our cost?
Those are future projects.
Okay.
Once you have fiber, you have a lot of options. We could create a public Wi-Fi anywhere in the community if we wanted to, because the fiber connectivity would be there. We could also designate a separate Wi-Fi network for first responders as well.
Okay, and you mentioned the schools, and this was something that was brought up by the youth council specifically, several times, at youth council meetings, in terms of the Wi-Fi is so slow. So is there possibly, there's, assuming a possibility that the schools would be able to tap into the fiber as well?
The schools are currently on their own fiber network.
Okay.
The Simi Valley Unified School District has their own private fiber network currently. If their Wi-Fi is slow in a school, that's a school problem, because they are served by fiber.
I am just bringing the youth council concerns to the city council.
Oh, yes.
Because that, you know, that's what they've mentioned, but...
Yes, they should go to the school district for meetings.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I move to introduce for first reading an ordinance approving a master encroachment permit, a license agreement, and a smart city managed services agreement with SciFi Networks Simi Valley LLC for a citywide fiber-to-premise network.
Second. First reading. So that's it?
Yep.
Yeah, that seems like all those necessary.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next item on the agenda is new business item 8B, consideration of proposed changes to neighborhood council district boundaries, and if changes are made, adoption of a resolution establishing the new boundaries, and the resolution is as follows. Resolution number 2020-09, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley modifying the boundaries of the neighborhood councils and rescinding and replacing resolution number 87-42 and all previous resolutions in conflict herewith. Emily Habib is here for this presentation.
Can I have the big screen, please? All right, good evening, Mayor Mashburn, and members of the City Council. Since 1970, the neighborhood councils have served as an important component in the city government structure. They promote citizen awareness and participation in local government. They advise the City Council and Planning Commission on Development Projects and Citizen Concerns. The neighborhood councils have had their district boundaries modified a number of times. The last modification occurred in 1987. At that time, the current map became effective. So we have Neighborhood Council 1 in the far west, 2, 3, and Neighborhood Council 4 in the far east end. This map was drawn on a north-south system, primarily along existing streets, and also so that each district had the 118 freeway included. On November 26, 2018, the City Council selected map 404B as the districting system for the city. So this is the current City Council districts. On December 10, 2018, an ordinance implementing this district system was adopted by the City Council. At that point, the question arose whether to modify the boundaries of the neighborhood council districts consistent with the new City Council districts' boundaries. There are several alternatives available to the City Council. Option 1, you can take no action, thus maintaining the current neighborhood council boundaries. Another alternative is to modify the current boundaries between neighborhoods councils 3 and 4 to more evenly distribute the populations between the two. And you'll notice that the current boundary between 3 and 4 is at Stern Street. Staff is proposing to move the boundary to Tappo Canyon Road, so that's what you're looking like, looking at if you do want to move the boundary. Third bound, still another alternative, is to modify the boundaries of the neighborhood councils to be consistent with the district map. And there's your district map again. This ends my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay, questions of staff?
Yes, I have a couple of questions, if I may, Mayor. Ms. Habib, how are city council members appointed to neighborhood councils, and do they stay with the same neighborhood council for their entire terms, or do they rotate?
Each neighborhood council has a city council liaison, one member, and these liaisons rotate every six months.
Okay.
So if you're Neighborhood Council 1, then you move to 2, 3, and 4, and you rotate back to 1. So that's always changing.
Okay, I'm curious, because I saw, you know, option 1, 2, and 3, and I heard some of the concerns, you know, of people only listening, you know, elected officials only listening to the people in their neighborhood councils that they represent and vote for them. But one of the solutions, or one of the options, and I don't know, you know, if this was, wasn't something that was considered by staff, is, you know, having that same rotation, you know, having council members still rotate neighborhood councils. So if we did choose option number 3, you could still have, you know, what is the option with regard to that, or the consideration with regard to that? Because we could still do that. We could still, if we did option number 3, and we aligned the neighborhood councils with the voting districts, we could still have council members that would rotate every six months. Was that the plan, or was there any plan with regard to that?
We hadn't considered that. What we're looking for tonight is guidance from the City Council at this point as to what option you want to take, including the option of sending it to the neighborhood councils for discussion. If you did choose item, option 2 or 3, what we would do is we would come back to you at a later meeting and show you opportunities and possibilities, and how we foresee the transition, and then that would be something for you all to discuss.
Okay, so I'm just bringing that up because one of the concerns was, you know, we're only going to have representation, but if we were previously rotating, I see no reason why we wouldn't just continue to do that rotation, because we're all interested in what happens across the city, you know, whether we represent District 1 or District 4, you know, just, and I just, you know, thought about this with regard to the school districts, because, you know, the school district is moving to districts, but I reside in one district, and my children go to school in a completely different district. So, you know, you may reside in one district, but your business may be in another district, so it would behoove us as council members to continue that rotation so that we, you know, are interested in everything that's happening in the city. So, and it addresses the concerns of residents that have been brought up even tonight, of, you know, us being aware of what's happening across the city, and so that's why I'm bringing it up, because it would, you know, pertain or affect people's decisions with regard to option, you know, 1, 2, or 3. So that's why I'm bringing it up. My other question is, you know, it's been 30, you said that neighborhood council boundaries have changed a number of times, and the last time was 1987, so we haven't changed boundaries in 37 years. That seems like a long time. Is that correct? 1987 was the last time they changed? That's what you stated?
Eighty-seven, yeah, that's actually 33 years.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, yes, 33.
Long enough.
It's late night, too much caffeine. Thank you for correcting my math. So it's been over 33 years since we have changed the neighborhood councils, districts. So, and how was, when they changed before, how did people find out that they were in a different neighborhood council? And I know it's been 33 years, so technology has changed, but how did people find out back then? And I'm concerned about the transition that I saw was mentioned in the report. You know, it seems like five months, you know, the transition time from June to October, it seems like a long period of time, and it's almost like we're, you know, getting right up until a month before the election. And it's, you know, I have, I have dozens of residents that have been asking me, you know, what district am I in? You know, what, what, what district is this in? What district is so-and-so in? So there's already concern. So it seems like if we delayed, you know, the transition period by five months, I'm just wondering, why, why did the transition period need to be five months? That's a really long time, because it's February now. So if we didn't begin the transition until June, and it would take five months all the way to October, was there some legal reason for that? Or why would it take so long to transition? And why wait until June? Why couldn't we start the transition now if there is a need for a transition period in, in, you know, March?
Well, I don't know that June is set specifically as a transition period. However, that is when the current, in the current recruitment cycle, that's when the current executive boards would rotate off, and new members would come in July 1st. However, if you were to modify the boundaries, I, my thought is that part of this would be, in fact, I would be starting a recruitment now, but I'm kind of waiting to hold off until I see what the council's wishes are, that we would need to come back with a transition period. I'm not sure how long it would need to be, and I'm, we're not necessarily saying it would have to start in June.
It, it wouldn't have to start in October either. We can certainly, once we come back with a plan, if, if the council chooses to go down either two or three, we would come back with a plan to move the transition through. It could certainly happen quicker than that.
Okay. I just, the, the timing of it seemed off to me, and for, and I understand, you know, people, but it seemed, there were a lot of people here from the neighborhood councils who were well aware. So had there been any discussion at all at neighborhood councils? I know there had been discussion about the voting districts at the neighborhood council level. Is that correct?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Okay. So there, and I know, I know I had mentioned several times from the dais, the need to transition since December 2018, so over a year and a half ago, I've been asking multiple times to transition to the voting district. So there, there obviously was an awareness, because we had so many neighborhood council people here tonight, you know, weighing in on the decision. So there is an awareness in the neighborhood councils of the possibility of transitioning. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, I'm not sure what the purpose would be in sending it down to the neighborhood council, you know, level again, although I know they provide input, but it seemed like there were so many of them here tonight from various, you know, neighborhood council districts two, three, and four, at least I saw that we heard from, that there was definitely an awareness of, of this transition. And like I said, I've been mentioning it from the dais several times, and I'm still, you know, trying to figure out why it has taken us so long to transition to this or to get to this point. I understand, you know, there's a lot of things that staff has to do, but, you know, we're, we're up against a district election in November, so, you know...
May I speak now? Are, are you done, or, I'm sorry?
Yeah. I, I just wanted to, you know, ask that question in terms of the transition period, and I think Brian already answered it. So thank you.
Right. There were people here from the neighborhood councils, and four of them wanted option three, and two of them wanted option two. So there are some different options, and as for transitioning, we're not transitioning till districts until November, after the November election anyway. So it, it, it gives us this time to actually do the transition so that it all matches up at the same time. If you were to transition, then prior to the district elections, they'd still be confused. So I think my personal opinion is because we did have differing views from people from differing neighborhood councils, and we might have all heard things from the neighborhood councils, but we haven't seen it in writing. I haven't seen statistics. I would like it to go to the neighborhood councils and ask what their opinion is. They're the ones sitting on the boards, they're the ones working with each other. I think they would be able to give us a better of idea of how it would work best for them. So that's my opinion.
If I, if I might make just a quick comment. Neighborhood councils were started one year after we were incorporated as a city. They are that important. Forty-nine years ago, neighborhood councils were formed, and we were one of the formative cities to have them. And so I think it's very important that we get, that we understand that their value and their importance. I believe Mike and I both served on neighborhood councils. If I'm not mistaken, Mike, didn't you serve on neighborhood council three or two one, at one time? So we've, we've had that experience of serving on neighborhood councils and recognize their, their, their value and their importance. I know that when I was appointed, that was the one, the first things I said is, knowing that we were going to districts, I wanted the neighborhood councils to be, to feel that they were very much a part of the district that is newly formed. Now, that being said, I, since we've had this ongoing discussion, I concur with Council Member Kavanaugh, that, that it would be, behoove us to have it go back to a discussion to the councils, to the neighborhood councils, and give them the options to weigh in specifically, and this is what they would like. I, I do think that there is a lot of confusion if we don't align the neighborhood councils with the districts. So that would, personally, it would be my preference, I believe, to have that consistency. But nonetheless, I would very much like the, like the neighborhood councils to weigh in on their thoughts. But I would like it to be a priority and be part of next month's agenda would be my, my recommendation.
Okay. I, I too agree that it should go to neighborhood council, however, with one caveat, I will give my opinion that if you match the districts and the neighborhood council the same, we're, the people we really represent, of course, we use, in a sense, the neighborhood council. They're part of our organization, and they can be trained and learned and educated, and we can do a better job of giving them the right information. But what we're ultimately doing is if we take option three, we're taking more vote away from the people we serve. If, if we leave it the way it is now, it's a checkered port effect, and they'll have two council members they could go to and speak to. And I don't believe in taking, just like I didn't agree with going to districts, because it took votes away from the people, and that's a direction that I don't think we should be going. With that said, let's go back, in my opinion, back to the neighborhood council and see what they have to say, and see if there's anybody on those councils that agree with me, and if they don't, that's fine. But let's keep it in mind who we serve.
Respectfully, Mayor, I would ask that if it is going to be, going back to the neighborhood councils, that it be fully publicized for the public, and a press release be given so that everyone is available, all the residents can weigh in on this decision, not just the neighborhood councils, but the neighborhood councils represent the residents. So every resident should have the opportunity to participate in that and give their feedback to the neighborhood councils.
Okay. Motion.
I move to solicit input from the neighborhood councils before taking any action.
Can we set a deadline, Council Member Kavanaugh?
I don't want to set a deadline until she can set her agendas.
Emily, how quick can you, how quick can you take it to the neighborhood councils?
I can take it in March.
Okay. So we can be back in April?
Yeah.
Okay. So during the month of March, it'll go to the neighborhood councils?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can we have a second?
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next item on the agenda is item 9A, city council member reports.
Okay. Council Member Litzner.
Thank you. In the month of February, beginning in, on Thursday, February 13th, I had the privilege of working or meeting with Anna Medina and David Yoshitomi with regards to the Simi Valley Arts Commission, and I appreciate the excellent briefing that they gave me and the work that is being done there at our Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center, and look forward to serving with the mayor on that commission as well. I hope everyone had a lovely Valentine's Day, February 14th. I enjoyed my son's wedding open house that weekend on the 15th. He's now happily married, living happily ever after. On Tuesday, February 18th, I enjoyed attending the ribbon cutting for El Capitan Fresh Mexican Grill and Seafood. I would like to commend and thank Emma and Carlos, who are Simi residents, who have opened this lovely restaurant that is very near the Cultural Arts Center. They have been operating a restaurant in Mission Hills, Juan Gusto Restante, since 2000, but now they have come home to roast in Simi Valley, and so I would encourage our residents to support them in their efforts. On Wednesday, February 19th, I did have the opportunity to visit with members of the marketplace, the homeowners association for the Tappo District that we discussed earlier, Sal Kayani and Sue Organ. Appreciate the time they took to visit. Also visited with Resident Pam Stalker on that, on that date. On Thursday, February 20th, met with our C manager, Mr. Brian Gabler, appreciated his comments. That evening, I attended the Seroptimists Live Your Dream Award celebration. I'd like to actually commend the Seroptimists for their efforts to benefit the lives of women in our community. In that particular event, they were offering scholarships to single mothers who were trying to complete and further their education, and they actually were able to give awards to seven recipients. So Laura Yamas was first place, Amy Lemos was second place, and also Brooke Pop, Ashley Reader, Anne Sorensen, Kelsey Molina, and Jamie Mosley were also recipients. And so I wanted to congratulate those women who are doing much to, to better their family and their lives, and, and thank the Seroptimists for all that they are doing. On Friday, February 21st, I had the privilege of, of attending the Simi Valley Baseball League Opening Day. I know this was baseball weekend, softball weekend, lots of great things happening. It was fun to return to my son's baseball stomping grounds there on Royal Avenue, and appreciated all the volunteers that go, and families that go into making it such a success. That evening, I, I commend Paula Cornell and her, and for the troops organization. They are fundraisers, they had to raise funds. They were, they were honoring Vietnam War veterans and their contributions, and they were raising funds to send off gift baskets to our, our enlisted men and women overseas. In fact, they were talking, one of the things they auctioned off was their 250,000th basket or box that they were sending off, which was so commendable. And I thought it was interesting, too, that, that the highest bidding item that evening was a basketball that was signed by Kobe Bryant, and it sold for $13,000. And in his honor, I'm wearing a purple jacket tonight. I just thought I would mention that. So February, that was Saturday, February 22nd. Sunday, February 23rd, it was lovely to attend the Simi Valley Girls' Softball Opening Day with my fellow council members. And I, I think that that is my report. I would encourage, as a member of the Simi Valley Ed Foundation, would encourage people to participate. March 7th is their, is their celebration of education coming up. Just wanted to mention that. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Council Member Lefanos.
Yes. On Thursday, February 13th, we had our Task Force on Homelessness, and Council Member Judge attended as well. Here in the Simi Valley Public Library, we had over 40, looked like at least over 40 residents who attended. So I was really happy to see so many people partaking in the Task Force on Homelessness and being interested in making sure that everyone is housed here in the city. We did make a, a motion was made to set three goals so that we can track our progress for the Task Force on Homelessness and making sure that we meet the, meet the needs of all those who need housing here in the city. There was a presentation on ADUs, a very excellent presentation on ADUs and the possibility of that, and tiny homes, which I know a lot of, there's been a lot of talk about tiny homes and whether or not that's possible, and how can we do it, and what are the challenges with regard to, you know, building tiny homes in the city, and what is the future with regard to state, local, and county ordinances that impact the building of tiny homes. But there was even mention of having an emergency camping ground somewhere in the city for our homeless to feel safe. So I was really glad, and we had several homeless residents who came and spoke, which I'm always enlightened to see that they're encouraged to come and participate in their local government. So I was really happy to see that. And everyone is welcome to come to our task force meetings anytime, and they're held in the library. That evening, after that meeting, I went to the Santa Susana Field Lab meeting, which was held at the Simi Cultural Arts Center, along with Mayor Mashburn and Councilwoman Kavanaugh. And there was discussion, Cal EPA Director came down, Bloomingfield, to discuss, you know, finally, finally cleaning up to background levels of Santa Susana Field Lab, which is still an area of concern for many of our residents. We've been waiting 60 years for that. So it was wonderful to see representatives from our federal, state, county, and local agencies all coming together and discussing the possibility of moving forward and finally getting cleanup on the Santa Susana Field Lab, which is directly impacting our residents. And the discussion of buying Golden State Water out was mentioned as well. So very glad to see their, the collaboration there across agencies. On Tuesday, February 18th, I attended the youth council special meeting at the Culture, Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center. They did a, a number of bonding activities, getting ready for the youth summit. They are going to discuss a number of issues, including environmental issues, including mental health, physical health, vaping, tobacco, public safety, homelessness, housing. So I do encourage anyone that's a middle school or high school student, if you're interested in attending the youth summit, you, you will not get deemed for being absent from school. Please attend the youth summit. It is free. They will feed you breakfast and lunch, and they have wonderful guest speakers. So I encourage anyone that wants to attend, there's still spots available to attend the youth summit. And they talked about their talent show and plans for that, and it is just wonderful to see so many active youth in our city. And as you said, Mayor Mashburn, they really are the future of our community, so it's wonderful to be involved with them. On Thursday, February 20th, I checked in at the Rancho Simi Recreation Parks District meeting to see what the status was of the BMX bike track. I just wanted to see what was happening with that. I'm always happy to find out that there is stuff that is being built in our city, and I know that's a collaborative effort with the city to have activities for our youth. I know I've, I've heard a lot of youth very excited about the upcoming skating, skate park, and I know the BMX bike track is another one that will really make us a destination, and even talk about maybe even having filming there at the BMX bike track once it's completed. So very excited for opportunities for our youth in the community. And that is my report.
Thank you.
Council Member Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Thursday, February 13th, I was scheduled to go to the Ventura County Animal Shelter meeting, unfortunately, I was tied up at work, but I did get a copy of a letter. There's a possibility of a $15 million grant from the state of California for animal shelters. So they're asking each and, each of us to send a letter out to possibly, well, to ask to the state to approve it, and then once they, once we get it approved, then we'll ask for our money. But we definitely need a brand-new shelter. Our Camarillo Shelter is outdated. It, it really can't even be repaired. It needs to be replaced. So either torn down and replaced, or moved to a new location. Our Simi building is in much better shape, and we own that one, and we just lease it to them. So that's a big, a big dollar item that's going to be coming forward. So if the state is able to give that grant, it would be wonderful. I'll forward the letter to Brian, and then he can disperse it as necessary. Let's see. I also attended, as, as Councilwoman Levenus mentioned, along with the mayor, the Santa Susana Field Lab Work Group meeting at the Cultural Arts Center. I think there was a very nice turnout. There were some good questions by people there, and there were some good answers. There were also some not answers, so that are still out there and up in the air. So it, it behooves us to all keep on top of that as much as possible. On September, or excuse me, Thursday, February 20th, there were a lot of things going on that evening. I did attend the EDC VC Board meeting down at Camarillo, that's Economic Development Collaborative. We're doing very well. It's doing great things. They're loaning out a lot of money, they're getting a lot of new businesses, small businesses. They loan money to businesses that don't qualify at a regular bank. So, and they also will go in and help struggling businesses by either helping you with your bookkeeping, or helping you hire new people, and what to look for, or to retrain your people. There, there, it's almost unlimited what they can do. torn down and replaced, or moved to a new location. Our Simi building is in much better shape, and we own that one, and we just lease it to them. So that's a big, a big dollar item that's going to be coming forward. So if the state is able to give that grant, it would be wonderful. I'll forward the letter to Brian, and then he can disperse it as necessary. Let's see. I also attended, as, as Councilwoman Louvenos mentioned, along with the mayor, the Santa Susana Field Lab Work Group Meeting at the Cultural Arts Center. I think there was a very nice turnout. There were some good questions by people there, and there were some good answers. There were also some not answers, so that are still out there and up in the air. So it behooves us to all keep on top of that as much as possible. On September, or excuse me, Thursday, February 20th, there were a lot of things going on that evening. I did attend the EDC VC Board Meeting down at Camarillo, that's Economic Development Collaborative. We're doing very well. It's doing great things. They're loaning out a lot of money. They're getting a lot of new businesses, small businesses. They loan money to businesses that don't qualify at a regular bank. So, and they also will go in and help struggling businesses by either helping you with your bookkeeping or helping you hire new people and what to look for, or to retrain your people. There, there, it's almost unlimited what they can do to help you. Unfortunately, the East County doesn't use, utilize them as much as the West County does. So on that point, I've been asked to become part of the executive committee. So if they approve me on March 4th, I'll be on, sitting on their executive board also, which we would really like to get some more activity up here in Simi Valley and/or more Park in Thousand Oaks, and be involved with that. It's a great, great group. The Director, Bruce Stensley, is fantastic. Actually, that our particular Ventura County group is going to be leading a whole statewide effort on doing some data and such, and we will be providing the state with that data. And they're going to get paid for that. So they're, they're really well respected, and they do a lot of work. There were three different events that evening. I couldn't go to the three of them. The BMX meeting that Councilmember Louvenos mentioned. I did speak with one of the Park District Directors on Sunday and asked where we're at on that. So she said they're going to be coming back to the city to, to possibly work with us, and that they have a group of people that are willing to do some fundraising, because they don't, just don't have the necessarily, all the fundrais, the funds and/or the property at this point in time. And they also need help on the piece of property they do, getting all the permits and all that, that type of thing. So. And I know the Seroptimists fundraiser. I was unable to go this year. I went last year. It's wonderful, heartwarming. I did go to a fundraiser for a local softball team. I'd already bought tickets prior to both of these, so I went to that, and we had a good time. On Sunday, February 23rd, my all-time favorite event every year, Simi Valley Girls Softball Opening Day. We have longtime president Gina Colletta Gooding right there. She was present there for years. That, that group, are they still have 500 girls, or?
Or just over 300.
Just over 300. It looked a little lighter than in the past. It kind of fluctuates according to the age groups. But I'll age myself. Back in the early 70s, that was Little Miss Softball, and I played. And then my daughter played in, yeah, I'm older than you, Gina. And then my daughter played in the 90s, and I sat on the board for that. So it's still strong. It's still out there, and they have developed and produced national champions, district champions, and D1 collegiate players, which is really, really cool. And Olympic players. Oh, Sam Fisher. I forgot. Yeah, see. So our girls softball league, along with all of our boys' baseball leagues, do a great job for our youth here in Simi Valley. And it's a great thing. I love to see them. You have to see their costumes. You have to see the names of their teams. One of my friend's teams, little, they were the Glitter Girls or something, you know. And then, oh, the Lady Glitter Girls or some, something like that. And then their names all had glitter on them, but, and tutus. And the best part is the dads wearing the tutus and the wigs and all that to match their girls. So really cute. That's my favorite part, and I'm going to close on that one. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Tuesday, February 11th, I met with Jim Buzell from Cabrio Builders, about a possible low-income senior project they're kind of going to try to bring to town. On Wednesday, February 19th, I too met with the HUA members from the Marketplace Master and Homeowners Association, the, the project we heard here tonight, listening to their concerns. I have not, I, this was the first time I'd seen the project through the eyes of the developer. That was the first time I talked, saw that was tonight. I too attended Saturday, February 22nd, the Simi Valley Baseball League Opening at two of the fields. And on Sunday, February 23rd, I attended also the Simi Valley Girls Softball Opening Day, which is always a great event. That's my report.
On Wednesday, February 12th, I met with developers dealing with the mall. On Thursday, February 13th, I met with other developers, looking at potential of coming into our area, and also met with Bob Huber's office on that. On Monday, February 17th, I attended the presentation regarding the Santa Susana Field Lab. On Tuesday, February 18th, attended the grand opening for El Capitan Mexican Food. On Wednesday, February 19th, met with the folks at the Marketplace Master and Homeowners Association. On February 21, I made two presentations to leadership Simi Valley. And on February 22nd, I attended for the troops. That was a nice banquet, raised a lot of money. I heard someone, I'm sorry, talk about a basketball bringing in the money. You, you did. Yeah, you were there. That's right, Elaine. That was awesome. They brought in a good sum of money on that basketball. I also went to Simi Youth Baseball Opening. I went to Captain Ed Ho, the Ventura County Fire Department, retired, and he had a retirement presentation at Station 44, which is Wood Branch, well-attended. On the 23rd, I went to Simi Valley Girls Softball Opening Day. I too very much enjoyed this event, and I was fortunate enough to be on the stage with Steve Yeager. So how about that? And made my little league grandson quite, quite jealous, because he was over at Simi Youth. I marked down here, I'd like to say there's been some questions, and I don't know a heck of a lot about it, but I think it's worthy of making a mention, that there's been some significant changes at the Samaritan Center. And there's a new CEO, I think, is there, her name? I don't know her name, but I mean, it's the position title. And I haven't met the lady yet, but I've heard good things coming out of the Samaritan Center, that there's been some positive changes, and things are going in the right direction there. And that's the end of my report. Okay. We'll go to 9B.
Mayor, I have a request for 9B item. I would request, I'm trying to, the, for the city's, the city's conflict of interest policy to be revisited and clarified by City Council.
Does that mean, I mean, we had, the person spoke about that. I appreciated that very much that she did so. Does that mean, when you say revisited, do you mean you're asking for a report about it? Are you desiring that we?
If you put it on the agenda, it's going to be that discussed and looked at for potential changes.
Yeah, so that, so that we can examine, yeah. So I would ask for a staff report so that we can examine it and see if it's okay as it is, or if we need to modify it. If we have residents that have, that are questioning whether or not, what it is, I just would like for us to be able to clarify.
I'm only a second. I don't have a problem looking at it, but I don't.
So you want a second?
If, if it needs to be seconded, yes, that's fine.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, any other requests?
I do have one request. Friday, I was driving by our physical facilities plant, and just, just observed, that building right now is still propped up with, with just the, the roof, which is, which I understand was necessary, but noticed that one of the windows had broken, had shattered. And I understand that there's engineering, I understand that there's, that the engineers looking at. I guess I would like the council to have a report of the condition of, of that building, and if there's something, some action that we need to take.
Okay, so a report from, who would the report come from?
That'll be staff. We can put together a report and send it on to the City Council for your information of what the conditions of, of the building down there and actions that are in place.
And the roof structure of also the, the facility, the, the mechanics facility as well. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I also have a, are you done? I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you very much.
Request of staff. On October 2nd, 2019, a complaint was filed with the Simi Valley Human Resource Department involving three council members and an unknown number of staff members and employees of the city. That's been like six months. I've done criminal investigations, and I've never treated criminals that way, with, with no input as to what's going on, what the status is of these charges against them. So I would request of staff, my guess is the legal department, to at the next council meeting, bring us a report on what is the status of this investigation. And with that, I would like a complete, accurate, very detailed cost report on what its cost in the city to accomplish this, and why is it taking so long?
What I could, what I could easily do, Mr. Mayor, is send an update to the council on the progress of the report. I understand that it is nearing completion, and then there's a, an opportunity for council to get a lot of that information that you're asking for. So I can send you an update right away on what you're asking about, and then there should be a date, if not certain, a date close on that.
Okay, the date certain will be the next meeting? How's that?
Well, if, if you want the motion.
I'm just requesting that a report come from?
Well, if we do open session, because it's a personnel matter and the reports are being written, it's, it's early for an actual report, although I obviously am appreciating what your motion is. But what I can do is update you on the progress of the, of the investigation that you mentioned, so that you know when that's coming. So.
Okay, and, and I'd like a detailed report on the cost, which there are no names attached to that, other than the city, Simi Valley, and the residents that get to pay for it.
I mean, with your indulgence, Mr. Mayor, I would send that confidential to all the council members, that, all that information that you're asking, that I have now. And then, and then.
Okay, can I ask, does it have to be confidential to the council member, or does it have to remain confidential?
No, no, it doesn't.
Because it's the taxpayers that are paying for it.
It does not have to remain confidential. So it does not have to remain confidential.
And I'm not asking for names or anything.
No, the, the costs do not have to remain confidential. So, you know, at some point, the council can, I guess, vote to release that, would be the way to do that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. With that, we have a very fortunate evening, that there's no need to adjourn in the memory of everybody. So we'll adjourn in the celebration of all that were here tonight. Thank you very much.